Beth, have you talked to Lauren recently?
Not really, no, only update that you gave me.
About the defibrillator?
Hey Scott.
Yes.
How you doing?
I'm good, and you?
Good.
Ted, did you have any success in researching how we can attach to those bonds?
Uh, yeah, we can file a claim on the bonds.
Okay.
But that's what I needed long.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Well, the darn, the darn thing about it evidently, the situation in Deer Creek happened like two years ago.
Yeah.
And I'm like, I-
I don't know if it'd be any good.
I know, and I said, "We need to be brought into this." You know, I guess they've been fighting back and forth with TDS and whoever, but I said-
Who's TDS is that?
That's Camden Telephone.
Okay.
They're, they're the ones putting in fiber in some places. Kind of frustrating that we weren't-
Yeah.
-brought in, brought into it sooner.
Now, these are bonds that they're posted with highway.
With highway, they should, yeah, they should.
Yeah, I, I just need to see them along what it says.
My, when Hunter gets up and talks, I might make mention of that.
Hey, just make sure this is good, because I'm gonna resend it.
Yeah, I was gonna ask if it had been rescinded.
No, not yet, I'm gonna resend it.
Well, how are ya?
Every time I get to resend, it's like a field trial.
Well, it's red.
Yeah, 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 I just wanted to make sure.
I joined the jeep, oh, I didn't.
Yep, yep.
Did you buy a jeep?
I did.
That's mine.
Okay, a jeep, yeah.
It's a 2016 Wrangler Unlimited, it's his 75th anniversary, um, it's all black, it's about leather and it's-
Sounds nice.
It is sharp. They, uh, they drive and ride a whole lot different than most anything I've ever had before.
Yeah, you get used to it though.
Oh, yeah.
I drove one, an engine I did, back in the nineties, early nineties, and it was a year old or so.
Got my check, that, that's a handy one.
Clear to Key West.
Oh, my God.
In fact, on the way back, we slept right there.
Okay, Mark.
A long time ago, but we have some other things.
I always check that box, but there's never anything in it until a day.
So it's a regular jeep jeep, it's not a Comanche or a-
No, it's, it's a four-door.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep, it's that Wrangler four-door.
Talked to Lauren this morning.
How's he doing? I know he ended up with a defibrillator.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
How's he doing?
Oh, good. Well, he's not as good as I hoped he'd be.
After the, after the surgery, he found out he has Afib, so he had to go back into the hospital and get a defibrillator. And I don't know, I think it's an external defibrillator, that they're talking about putting a pacemaker or something in with it too, so.
He's really going through it.
Yeah.
Told him he had a heart attack when he was thirty-seven years old.
Yeah, without his knowledge.
Yeah.
Said that the left-
Lost twenty-five percent of his heart.
Left side of his heart has been non-functional, but-
That's permanent amity, huh?
Yeah, yeah.
I think I dropped her off, because that's nine, it should be nine o'clock, mine was five minutes off this morning.
Well, where the time is.
It is, it's at two after.
That's an hour ago.
I'm sorry, Scott, I'm not-
By the time they got all the way around, is that what you're talking about?
Claims. What time do you have?
I've got just a smidge after nine.
I think we're gonna go ahead and start even though we have a discrepancy in clocks here, so, uh, what time do you have, Ted?
Nine oh two.
No, that's what I have. So, welcome to the Carroll County Commissioners' meeting here, and, uh, would like to invite you to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sorry about my cold, I'm especially sorry for Scott sitting next to me up here about my cold. My wife takes care of our grandkids a couple days a week, and, uh, they come home from school with everything. And it isn't long before it catches us, then. We are up now to approval of the regular meeting of October twentieth.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes as presented of the, I guess it was a October twentieth meeting.
Okay, I will second that and call for a vote. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. We have the approval of claims.
I went through and signed them all, so I will make a motion that we approve the claims as presented.
Okay, and I will second it and call for a vote again. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. Now, before I go any farther, I had a very nice conversation this morning with Lauren, and, uh, he is coming along. I think it's gonna be a while, it's gonna be, gonna take him a lot longer than anybody hoped it would take to get him coming around, but we're just thanking the good Lord we still have Lauren. A few years ago, we wouldn't. But, uh, Lauren is maybe tuned in right now, I don't know. If you are, I don't even know where the camera is for me to look at Lauren, so, it's right up there, right? Anyway, we can't wait till he's back here, and, uh, he's, uh, he's watching the meetings and he's doing what's going on, so. It was very good talking with him. Uh, next up, we have Highway Superintendent Hunter Alderman. Good morning, Hunter.
I'd like to just put in the paper to start advertising for our stone and fuel bidding for next year. I got the dates of November twelfth to November nineteenth. Them all go in the auditor's office by November twenty-eighth by four o'clock.
Sounds good to me, what about you, Scott?
Yeah, in, back in by November twenty eighth.
The twenty-eighth of November.
Well, the twenty-eighth is a holiday, so we won't be there.
November twenty-eighth.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I did, yeah, I missed that.
But you could go the next, you could go right before Thanksgiving, because you've got to, you published it twice.
Yeah.
Say the twenty-sixth?
Twenty-sixth would be, yeah, we can do that. Yep, sorry about that.
At noon?
Yeah.
November, oh, yeah, got the twenty-seventh there of Thanksgiving.
Yeah, I did.
So you're gonna have him due back in on the twenty-sixth?
Yeah, twenty-sixth, yep.
Okay. Ted, we need a motion on that, don't we?
Yes.
So moved, I'll make the motion that we advertise, um, bids for stone and fuel to be back here and to the auditor's office by November twenty-sixth at noon.
At noon, okay. I will second that and call for the vote. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that's it, it passed. Anything else for us?
Just update on the sidewinding, we started sidewinding on three hundred south on four twenty-one, uh, last Thursday. Our broom broke down, uh, the injectors are out of it, so we, White County was nice enough to let us use one of their brooms to get us through sidewinding for the year. So, we have one of White County's brooms to get us through.
Oh, I don't understand, what's the boom do?
The broom, it goes in the sidewinder-
Broom?
The broom, yeah.
With an R in there?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
It goes through behind, because the sidewinder puts a stone down inside the road, well, there's so much leakage, stone goes all over the road, so the broom comes in and sweeps it off.
Yeah, okay.
And ours is down till next year, until we can get injectors in it, so-
Uh-huh.
White County let us use theirs to get us through the couple weeks, because nowhere had one to rent, so we end up using White County's.
Um, we don't use that very often, do we?
No, mainly just like after winter, we try brooming the hills off of the leftover sand and salt and stuff like that. And before chip and seal, we try brooming the roads to chip and seal, so we don't get used a lot, but-
Okay.
Definitely nice to have.
Is it fixable?
Yeah, yeah, we just gotta put new injectors on it, so.
Okay, you got anything else for us?
No, we've got it.
Okay.
Is the sidewinding done now?
N- no, we just started it.
Just in the pro-
Yeah, because we couldn't get the broom, once ours went down, we couldn't get the broom-
Okay.
Uh, until Friday, but I, we're hoping, hopefully, this week we get done with three hundred south, and then move up to nine fifty, uh, north off four twenty-one. And then, we're hoping within a week and a half, we'll be done sidewinding.
Okay.
That's the goal anyways, and then get sandboxes on and ready for winter.
Sounds good.
I have a, a question, that we have a, been brought to my attention, an issue, um, with T, the TDS that was putting in fiber. And evidently, it happened a couple of years ago. Wanted to see if you could get, retrieve the bond for that, for TDS, uh, for who was doing the fiber installation, the, you know, direct bore, plowing in, whichever they were doing, and get that to Ted. I believe that we're gonna have to attach some damages to that bond that you can-
Is that back in twenty-three?
Probably, yeah, it's been a couple of years ago, uh-huh.
Okay.
My, my hope is that we still have it, um, and I was a little disappointed that we were not notified of it until now, but-
There are two parts to it, there's the, uh, part that they fill out for that, for the highway department. And there is an application, and then there is a bond that we have our, we call it our bond. It, it's actually the document that says they have to restore everything. And then the third part, the, the, the money part, is a surety bond that a, uh, a bond insurance, you know, bond company provides. And they reference that, so there are actually three, three parts to each one of these.
Okay.
And, uh, um, the third one is the one I wanna see, how long it's good for, well, and all, all, all three parts of it. Any, any, any paperwork they've got for that.
Okay.
I, I wanna see it.
Okay.
I'll just dig and wanna get back, see if we can-
All right, all right, thank you.
Anybody have any comments or questions for the highway department? You must be doing good, Hunter. When I first started asking about that, there'd be five hands go up out here. My holes need filled. EMS Director Doug.
He is running a little late, he said he might-
All right, well, we'll just jump ahead to County Councilmember Brady Wiles. Good morning, Brady.
Good morning, um, my name is Brady Wiles, I'm District Two, the county council, so, um, today, representing the entirety of the council. And, you know, in regards to Carroll Manor. It was very early on in the budget process, we worked through, um, we made it a priority to put Carroll Manor, um, at the, you know, at the top of the list as something we wanted to address, and hopefully, put them in a position to succeed for, you know, many years to come. So, I think it's, you know, pretty obvious to everyone that pays attention that, you know, there's some concerns, obviously some financial concerns. So, what we did is, um, we voted and it ended up, um, seven zero to pay for the entirety of the salary of the superintendent, the health insurance of the superintendent, um, social security and perf. So basically, everything, um, when it comes to her salaries, we decided to pay that out of the rainy day fund. So we adopted a resolution for twenty-six and twenty-seven, so a two-year budget cycle, to hopefully take those, um, dollars out of her budget. And, um, where the revenue coming in can hopefully, um, be more than what's being spent. So, that is our way of investing county dollars into the Carroll Manor, um, it was very important to us and a priority, so, um, so again, that, that takes about seventy thousand dollars out of her budget, hopefully, to help get things back on track. With that being said, it, it is my personal opinion that if, if things continue exactly how they are right now, um, you know, we, it won't be fixed, and it'll probably be, um, you know, in twenty twenty-seven, we'll be looking at doing possibly the same thing again. So, we have kinda drafted this, I've, I've spoken with the council members, and we would like to present this to you all. It is our request, um, for you all to have, um, Mr., to have Ted, um, draft a, an ordinance establishing a Carroll County Manor, or, I, I'm sorry, a Carroll Manor Advisory Board. Even though different departments are state mandated to have it, you know, there are multiple departments that have boards, um, EMA, E nine one one, EMS, and, and the Sheriff's Department. So, it's our request that we put this board together. The roles that we see this, this board doing is conducting monthly meetings, um, to provide recommendations and reports to the commissioners and the council. We would like for them to review a, a full director slash superintendent report, you know, made by the superintendent. Obviously, the board would need to establish the requirements for that report. It's our opinion that the board would review all full, full financial reports from the Manor, including all income coming in, donations, et cetera, revenue from the, um, people living there, and then also to review all outgoing expenses and bills, um, as well. We think they should be involved with operational policies and procedures, and then, um, you know, be involved with the advertisement and the community awareness of hopefully attracting more members to come into the Manor. So, um, we would suggest a seven-person board, um, we, we've kinda drafted what we think. Maybe, maybe one commissioner, two councilmen, an elected official, a member of the Health Department, possibly a township trustee, or if you can't find one, maybe a, a board member of a trustee, and then just someone from the general public. Yep, so I, I think what we're, what we're getting at with this is obviously some accountability, some good accountability and, and bad accountability. More people involved with, you know, decision-making, and maybe more just transparency with monies coming in and out and, and all of that. Uh, another topic we'd like to hopefully include in the ordinance, and I don't know if this is an ordinance or a resolution, so he would, we'd have to get direction there, but um, we think it'd be important for all money that is coming in, receiving from the Manor, um, to be done, so, not with cash, no exceptions to that. So done with, um, completed with personal check, cashier's check or money order, and we believe that needs to be brought to the auditor's office, um, when, when received. So, that's, that's where we are, um, happy to ask, answer any questions. But it's very important to us, and I think it'd be great for us to, the two bodies to come together to, to help, you know, this, this place succeed, and, uh, it is my personal opinion that most people, um, want that to happen. We think our, our people in this county want, want the Manor to stay and succeed and, and be here for a long time.
Do you have any questions, or do you have?
I, I really don't have any questions, um, maybe a statement, I, I think this is admirable that, that the council has, has done this, and I think it's probably past time to do this, so we've been struggling with the budget, um, with the Manor for years. And I, I think that this hopefully can give us some direction and, uh, and a little more knowledge of what is going on out there and what potentially can be done to help, help solve the issue, because I do think that everyone here in the county believes, you know, try to save the Manor in any way, shape or form. So, yeah, I, I applaud you guys for your work, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I like this format that you've laid out here. See, I got a couple of questions about it, um.
While you're looking at that, obviously, it's not our job or responsibility to appoint these board members, um, I'm happy to help you with that. I, on page two, I did talk to quite a few people that have interest and fit the categories that I presented. So again, if you choose to do so, I'm, I'm happy to help you, um, with, I guess, my, our suggestions on, on who's on the board, but, um, ultimately, that's, that's your own decision.
Thank you, well, the, the board that you have written down here for us, looks like a very good board. I wanna go back to early there, you, you were talking about the budget, and you said that the, um, you were, the council was picking up the health insurance and wages for the, um, number one person out there, for the, for the manager. Uh, what about the, an assistant superintendent out there?
Yeah, it, it was brought up, and, and there was multiple different opinions on that. We felt, I, I can't really, I can't really talk for everyone, but it was very difficult for us to, um, ultimately get enough votes to pass having an assistant out there, um, simply because of all the budget cuts that we had to make. I mean, it was, I think, around six point one million dollars out of the general fund. And we thought that, you know, cutting six point one million out of the general fund with all the requests that were presented to us, um, you know, I think specific to that position, it was difficult for us to approve another position, even though that's not being paid out of the general fund. You know, we, we kinda look at optics and, and all that good stuff. The other thing, the other thing is we, um, you know, we, I, I feel like with this board, maybe that's something that the board can identify as a, as a priority in the coming months, that, hey, it, it truly is needed, but until we had more information and more, um, more reports and more, um, I guess, general knowledge on the entirety of the situation, I don't, I don't think that was voted on with enough votes to pass.
Well, I have to say, I'm disappointed in that, because I was hoping we were going to get an assistant superintendent there. I just simply think time-wise, uh, it's not possible to do an adequate job of managing that facility without having a number two person.
Yeah. I think the other thing, um, I mean, maybe, maybe if she presents that to you all and you approve the position, then maybe it could be revisited for us to fund it or not. Again, I, I don't know, I, I always see it two different ways, that, I don't necessarily understand why we fund positions before they're approved by you all, but, but, that is what it is, so.
Sometimes you don't.
Right, right, so maybe, maybe that's something, um, you know, maybe we establish this board next month and they start meeting, and, you know, come first quarter of next year, second quarter, maybe that's identified as a high priority, and maybe you all can approve that position and then bring it to us for funding and see what happens. So, I, I think there are multiple people on the board that supported it, and there was multiple people, obviously, that did not, so, um, it wasn't seven oh zero, you know, seven zero either way, so I think that's something that could definitely be visited, um, when we have more information.
To me, we have always had a problem county-wide, of county government, of you can't hire anybody new in until the old person is completely off payroll, is done. I, I don't, I don't think that's, I'm just offering my opinion to you, I don't believe that's realistic. We can't even advertise for, can we, Beth?
You can advertise.
We can advertise, okay. We can't hire though, so it makes it, um, it makes it very difficult to, um, have a continuity of anything when you don't have a new person coming in for that spot, or you don't know. And I'm thinking ahead of, if something happened that we suddenly didn't have our superintendent, then what would we do?
Yeah.
We had a, that situation before, and a, a lady that was on the friends group stepped forward and says, "I will do it for so many months, free of charge." And I'm very disappointed, say, she's passed away now, uh, 'cause she had some really good ideas and really did some things. I don't know what we'd have done without her, I know I was spending way more time out there than, than I really wanted to, because we didn't have any structure to handle a situation like that.
Yeah.
Anyway, I'd appreciate it if you'd keep that in mind and thinking about it. Anyway, I'd appreciate it if you'd keep that in mind in thinking about it. You have this as an advisory board, and that's where you see it staying, as advisory?
Well, just, I guess, just on precedent, yes, but I, I mean, as long as there is a body that is receiving 100% of information and is able to report it to the two governing bodies, I, I mean, I would personally be open to however you'd like to set it up. I mean, if you want that board to have authority, true authority, then I think that's not a bad thing, but obviously, that would have to come from you all.
Well, one thing that we have always had a problem with is getting all the information we want.
Yeah.
We just don't get it.
And that's why I'm proposing an official ordinance drafted by your attorney that is 100% a requirement, and ultimately, that's where we can start to hold accountability there. Again, we'll see the stuff that's going really well, we'll see the areas that's not, but until we get that information you're speaking of, I don't think anyone can give a true opinion.
One more comment on my part. It is handy for us in budgeting to hand over the cost to the employees to donations. I don't think that's right, though. What if we don't get enough donations? Too bad, you guys don't get paid this week. We have to pay them, you know, if they work, we have to pay them, yes.
We have been paying them, and we pay them out of Carol Manor. We don't ever pay them out of donations.
We pay them out of Carol Manor.
Carol Manor Fund, and that's why it's in the red.
Well, we have established that $30,000 of ours, too, that could go into that, right? That's in the Commissioner's budget? Did that go through?
This year or next year?
Pardon me?
This year or next year? This year, you had $20,000, and she has spent that.
Yes.
And it did not go for any...
Payroll.
Payroll. All payroll goes, comes out of the 4,900, and I have to pay them, so that's why it's in the red.
Define 4,900 to me.
Carol Manor Fund.
That's it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. But the donations go into 4,900, or no?
They go in their own fund, it's 4,108.
Okay, so you've got to pull some out of there and put it in the 4,900 fund?
No.
Haven't done that this year?
We did it once, maybe at the beginning, or twice in the beginning, when she did a transfer, no, not really even a transfer, we just paid them out there because of, she needed to pay some bills. We have some early claims in there, that Paul Ryder, I thought, is he here? No. It's about the septic and everything, I was gonna, we have to pay those, those are early claims, and so her donation plan will probably be gone, and she still needs some more money.
Okay. Well, do you have something there to read to us?
Well, just, I guess, for the public's knowledge, by paying the lines out of Rainy Day that I mentioned earlier, and the Carol Manor expenses that is out of the Commissioner's budget, I mean, we're creeping really close to $100,000 of county money that is, that we are putting directly into the Manor. So, again, you see, you see a lot of public knowledge and a lot of people out there saying that the county is not investing money into the Manor. They can no longer say that. We are committing dollars to the Manor from the county now, so that can no longer be a thing.
Itemize to me how we got up to $100,000 there.
Okay, so this is very rounded numbers, because I'm doing this, standing in front of a lot of people, but there's $25,000 in the Commissioner's line, which is the Carol Manor expenses. There is, again, the superintendent's salary, I'd have to, there we go, I got lucky and pulled the correct page. So $25,000 from the Commissioner's budget, out of the 4,900 Carol Manor, $45,839 of the superintendent's salary, and then you have $17,586 in Social Security, and you have $3,059 of retirement, and then you have group health insurance, which I think's around $11,000 per employee, so...
$11,000 for what?
Every full-time employee, we budget, I think, $11,000 for health insurance. So again, my numbers may be not close, but it's creeping towards $100,000 of...
And that's for next year?
Yes, for next year. So with that being said, we look at the money that was brought in last year, and we look at the money that we are now investing county-wise, and if we start towards the right direction, we feel that that is a budget that operates the Manor without possibility of being in the red. Now, things have to go well. I mean, so, but if we keep the same amount of people that's there right now, which we personally believe is worst-case scenario, we think that number can go higher with advertisement and different things like that, but if they keep the same number, we believe we provided them with a budget that can succeed.
So donations will go to what now?
Well, there's still a donation fund.
It'll stay right where it's at.
What's that?
It'll stay in its donation funds, the fund, but, I mean, she tells us which ones to pay out of the donations and whatnot, but right now, she has no choice.
Okay.
Although, she has come to you guys, and you have paid some out of QMCA for sewer lines, I think there's one more, but I can't think of it. We're off the top.
Okay.
Mr. Johnson, does this look okay to you?
Yeah, I was going to ask for your email address. What I plan to do is to, you know, we've reorganized the Emergency Management Advisory Council, and we've reorganized the EMS Advisory Council. My plan, I don't see that those are inconsistent with this type of advisory board. They are advisory boards, and, you know, I think I can incorporate all of these duties into that, into an ordinance. So if you want to see what I'm, I can send you what I'm going to be working from, but it's going to be the same one that we've done for EMS and EMA. And because I have something I can plug it into, I can probably have this done next meeting.
Okay. If you'd like me to be involved, I'd be happy to, but, I mean, again, ultimately, it's your decision.
Okay. So I would like your email address.
Okay.
When you get a chance.
Okay.
I'll get that from Beth.
Counsel, yeah, counsel, too.
I will send you what I'm working from, so you can comment on where there might, you might even want to have something different than what we've done in the past, but they're pretty detailed, you know?
Yeah.
And so forth, so...
And then, the second thing was the collecting of the fees.
That needs to be done. I got to check our, well, the state, state says that, actually, the state says you're supposed to turn in money within two business days?
We have set it up with her, or in the past, every week.
Every week? What works, Beth?
Especially when they didn't have an assistant director, because every Friday, it's fine. I mean, a lot of people bring them in every Friday.
Does that sound okay? But no more cash donations, right?
Right, or that's what they said.
So that we can do by, we can probably do that by a resolution. That would not go in this other document, this ordinance, and resolution is something you can change more easily than an ordinance, so I'll prepare a resolution and let the Board look at it first, and then send it to you to, so...
And then also maybe reference EMS, because, like, this isn't something that is new to this county, so like EMS, we don't, we don't collect checks or anything like that when it comes to fees, they're brought directly to the Auditor, so, or sent directly to the Auditor, so maybe reference that as well.
I'm not familiar with, what are we...
EMS?
Yep, so like Doug's not going to take cash from somebody, right?
No, no, but most of his have come from his collection agency that come through, like an ACH or an entity.
Okay.
Okay, I'm not sure I understand what you're talking about when you say "collection of fees."
Well, specific to the Manor, we're talking about donations and things like that. We think that it should be brought to a, to the Auditor's Office or whatever.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and not necessarily, you know, directly.
That has always been okay to do, but she collects the donations out there and brings them in. We don't have a problem if somebody comes in, we would write them a receipt and do it.
Yes.
I have a question for Ted. It was brought to my attention that she is a representative for at least two of the patients out there, meaning she takes care of all their finances and...
Like a power of attorney, you mean? Or representative payee?
Yes, but I don't think she is a power of attorney. She does, that's how I understand her. She filled out the forms so that she gets the stuff correct, and she pays their bills, and is that ethical?
I don't know what, I really don't know what you're talking about. You mean, I don't think we have anything on the pile.
She has two residents out there, at least two, that, like, when they get their Social Security checks, she handles all of their finances.
So she's probably a representative payee under the Social Security Act, is what it is.
Is that...
Well, you know, that's a good question. I, I'm not sure that it's, there's any problem, because there is, there are obligations, you know, that are federal obligations for somebody receiving it. I don't see that it creates a problem for the county, as long as it's permissible under the Social Security Administration. So I guess I want to know more about that.
I do, too.
Yeah, that's something we need to look into. We need to also, to protect, I mean, it's a convenience, and, you know, a person can designate anybody to be their representative payee. Those things are abused, by the way, you know, they're abused by family members. So I'm not casting any, you know, doubt or questioning her ethics on this. I want to know what the law says about that candidate administrator of a, now, this is not a nursing home, this is a, this is a residential facility, it's not a nursing home, so they're not under the same regulations as nursing homes are, so I'm going to have to research that. Thanks for calling it to my attention, though.
We had a meeting last week out there with several of the friends of Carol Manor, and that particular issue came out that I don't think anybody knew was going on until that meeting, and, you know, that their Social Security checks and stuff is going to her home address.
Not even the Manor, it's going to her house.
Okay, okay.
So, yeah, we'd appreciate...
She's probably the representative payee, and we need to protect whoever is in that position, you know, for not being, you know, accused of that, if they're doing something completely right. We may want to put a policy in place that prohibits that, you know?
They want to protect your people that are running off of you, and those people need protection, too. They all, they all need protection.
Sure, yeah, exactly.
In a split, it would be better to have, like, that area take care of that, or...
Well, that's the problem, a lot of times, there's not somebody that's, that may not be, have that person's best interests, because they're not related to them or anything like that. You know, it's almost, in my opinion, if it's, if it can be done to, for a, if it's permissible by Social Security to have a representative payee be also the director of a facility of some kind, that may be better than having somebody off the street come in and say, "Oh, I'll do it," you know, you know? Who's going to watch that person? It may be more, something that you can monitor more by controlling who, you know, so that we are aware who they are representative payee for, and have the ability to, you know, maybe require them to, if they aren't already doing it, separate their funds from their personal funds and all that kind of stuff. We can come up with regulations to do that, you know, but who's going to, who else is going to do it for each one of these persons, you know? It's a problem that's bigger than, you know, that's, it's a problem in a lot of situations, so we'll have to look into it.
Okay, Brady, do you have more for us?
You have it.
Do you have more for us?
I don't, unless you have questions, I...
You have more questions?
No, I do not. Do we need a...
Motion to direct me to prepare a...
Ordinance.
...for creation of the Carol and Manor, Carol Manor Advisory Board.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we create an ordinance to establish a Carol Manor Advisory Board.
Good enough.
I'll second it and call for a vote. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
Thank you.
Should I also make a motion concerning a resolution with non-cash?
Yes.
Okay, I'll make a resolution, or make a motion that we adopt a resolution concerning the Carol Manor in not accepting any cash in any form from now on. Well, accepting any cash.
So if we have somebody that walks in and wants to give us a $100 bill to go to Manor, we can't take it?
Can cash be accepted at the Auditor's Office?
Yes.
So that's my opinion, if it is cash, it should be brought here.
Okay.
But should it go through the hands of the, is it permissible to go through the hands of the superintendent?
It's my opinion, no.
I would say no. That any cash... I don't want to phrase this.
Well, what does the Sheriff's Department and EMS do? Maybe stay in line with them? I don't know. Or maybe it's something we should look at for all departments.
Okay.
There's a state law that says you have to turn in within two business days, I think it is, so...
And I believe, I think the superintendent does come in, like, twice a week, if not just once a week, but that is fine, and just so it's consistent. The cash part, we don't handle the cash that she brings in, we don't handle the checks, as a matter of fact, we don't even add them up, because we're not supposed to touch any other funds, they go, we start a receipt, what they tell us on their collection, and goes over to the Treasurer's Office, and then they okay everything, and then we print this receipt. I don't know if, I really don't know how much cash she does bring in. If anything, it would be for the donations, it wouldn't be for the rent.
Everything about this is about transparency, and it's my opinion that cash leaves a gray area, so at least if it was checked, money order, or, you know, cashier's check, we feel like it would bring transparency and we could track everything.
Agreed.
Well, I think that's wonderful. Right now, it's as transparent as that wall behind you right there.
Yeah.
So we don't see what all is going on.
And I do concur in the non-acceptance of cash out there. If someone wishes to make a cash donation or pay in cash, it needs to come directly to the Auditor's Office.
So do you want to amend your motion?
I would, yes.
You want to restate it for Mitch Scott? No.
I'll make, yeah, I'll make a motion that we create a resolution to...
I'll ma, yeah, I'll make a motion that we create a resolution to...
We don't have a resolution yet. We draft a resolution.
Okay, draft a resolution to not accept any cash at the manor, that all cash needs to be brought to the auditor's office.
What about receipting it in?
Okay, it'll, if they come in and give us cash, we will receipt it in and they get it to the Treasurer's Office.
What about if it's just handed to somebody out there at the manor? A hundred dollar bill, do they get a receipt on it?
Well, I don't know what she does. She should give them a receipt, but she won't need to tell them to come to the auditor's office.
That would be her job. That would be her responsibility to make certain that there's no cash transactions out there whatsoever.
Correct, that's what I'm saying. She would have to tell them that they can bring it up, up to the auditor's office.
Right.
So, I'm, I'm a full-time government employee and I, I cannot accept cash. I direct them directly to the auditor and Treasurer's Office at my place of employment.
Okay, I'll second your motion and call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. Thank you, Brady. I know there's a lot going into this. Uh, next up is Council Angie Brown.
I'm here representing the council. Um, we have a business in West Lafayette and, um, we currently use Waste Management and we pay seventeen hundred dollars a month for our trash pickup. And I called Trash Cans to get a quote from them and, um, we have three dumpsters. They were going to give us three bigger dumpsters and charge us eight hundred dollars per month. So, that's quite a savings. I would like for you to consider to switching all of your trash pickup for county entities from Waste Management to Trash Cans. I think it would make a considerable savings for us. And, um, I don't know, you know, what the best way to do that is if you have to contact each, each one that has dumpsters or what, but, um, maybe email everybody and tell them. But I, I really think this is something that the county should do. I think Waste Management is way overpriced.
Well... Are we in the spot right now where we're going to be, let's take the trash transfer station? Are they going to be taking their bill that they're getting now from Waste Management and getting a bid from Trash Cans, each individual person, or how are we gonna...
Well, I think, I think that's the way they should do it, is get a bid and, and see what the difference is. I don't think they should show them the bill of what Waste Management charges, but I think they should, you know, talk to them and, like, like I called them and I told them how many times a week we got, we got our dumpsters dumped and how many dumpsters we had and what size they were. And they gave me an estimate on what it was gonna be and it was ridiculously cheaper.
Yes.
I don't... Go ahead.
Um, I know that here at the courthouse, we've already started to transition, uh, letter had been sent out to Waste Management, um, to cancel that contract so we can go with TK. I do believe the Parks Department is doing the same thing as well. So, I know here in the Parks have already started that because the savings is significant. It really is.
And who are you contracting with?
TK.
TK.
Trash cans.
Trash cans, sorry.
Trash cans, okay, I got it.
We did that, what, Keith, last meeting or a couple meetings ago?
Yeah, because the letter was sent out to Waste Management, uh, on the twentieth, so it'd been the meeting before that.
Okay.
So, how many?
Do we have to notify Waste Management like we did the last time with the letter and...
Yeah, I assume we have a contract with them and, you know, we're, uh, we're, we're likely gonna be paying fees, you know? Because those contracts are, are legal, uh, that they have. But yes, uh, it's, it, it appears that, that everybody at these departments have entered individual contracts with them. I don't know how many others we've got out there with them.
Yeah, I don't either.
I know, like, our, our contract that we had was for one year and then they just automatically redo it without resigning or anything, so I don't know what the legal aspect would be on that.
Well, that, it is automatically renewed, but it, it's got, if you, uh, if you want to terminate it, then they've got, uh, they've got, you've, you've got to follow their rules on how to terminate it. And we're cutting these two off without following those rules. One of them, we have a potential claim that we have a right to because they didn't have a contract with us. Their predecessor had a contract with us for the courthouse. The, the Park is another situation, uh, there, there was no predecessor contract, so, but we're, we're cutting them off and, uh, Bob has already had them pick up the dumpster and so forth, so, um, you know, if there's, if there's a... I don't, I haven't seen the contract for the, uh, what, transfer station. I, I'd like to look at that so you know what you're doing before you vote on it.
Okay.
Highway Department, do we use Waste Management?
Yes, we use Waste Management. And I don't have the number in front of me, I didn't bring them, but I actually checked into the, like, Onpoint because all around us, there are Florida's Onpoint. And I know that they was a lot cheaper than Waste Manag...
Okay.
We may want to do this, instead of just terminating these, we may want to do, uh...
Individually?
Advertise, you know, get bids and then let them compete for the business. And then, if they don't, uh, you know, if they don't get it, then, then we can go with the cheaper one. It may be the better way legally to do it, uh, than just cut them off and wait until the bills come for the termination fees that they've got in. TK's contract has the same thing. I gave, uh, I gave Keith a revised form of the TK contract, so they were doing the same thing. There's termination fees in the TK contract, so you gotta watch what you sign. If you, uh, if you signed up for another one, you know, uh, Waste Management, just, just increase, 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 increase. TK could, could do the same thing.
And in my research with, uh, changing up companies and seeing the cost, I didn't review at what capacity they have for dumpsters, roll-offs. I don't know if the Highway Department has roll-offs that they need, but transfer stations would have, would need, uh, a company that would have, have access to roll-off dumpsters and everything else back into their dock. So, I don't know if TK has that or Trash Cans has that or Onpoint has that. So, if you're looking at it as a global county-wide changeover to a different company, you have to look at what capacity of dumpsters that they actually really have available to them.
So, we need, we need the paperwork that, that these, that, that the Highway's got and the, and the Treasure Station.
About the ambulance department? Do you have, uh, you have Waste Management?
Yeah, we have Onpoint.
I didn't get that.
They have Onpoint.
One problem we had, uh, in the past is when we got, we went away from Waste Management, we switched to another company, but Waste Management ended up buying that company out too.
Yeah, that's what'll happen. That's what's happening in Lawrence County.
Okay.
Well, I, in looking at the savings, I think it's something we need to really pursue, but I don't know...
I think, see where we are with our contracts.
All right.
And then...
Does each individual department have their own contract or is it all in the courthouse somewhere?
Everybody's got their own.
Well, I, I would, I would guess each department within the courthouse has one, but probably, you know, EMS and Highway, the home, the jail, um, you know, each separate physical facility very well might have their own.
911?
I would assume. Mike, is that 911 have...
I, I just took over the sheriff's contract because he was still on contract at the old jail.
With?
The jail. With Waste Management.
The Waste Management.
And that's who the sheriff was without it.
Out of the new jail, okay.
See, there's what I'm thinking about, I ain't thinking of jail, yeah. You, you have Waste Management out here at the, uh, at, at your building out here?
No, I don't have any trash service there. I have to take it out to the transfer station and bring it up here to 911. But I am gonna check with Duff, I would, just see if they'll add a trash can onto my water. Because I think that's how they pay.
Okay, well, I guess we just need to ask every department if they have a contract, we need to see it.
Yep. Could, could, could you send an email to the...
Email and ask them to bring it in or be at the next meeting?
We'll copy it, we need a copy of that.
Yeah, we, we'd like to see a copy of it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just the bill or the contract today?
The contract.
Contract.
Maybe you have their current bill because the original contract was one price and what they're paying now may be something...
Okay, Ted, we're down to you.
Okay, so, we're making progress on this swap. The, uh, uh, Single Tree has signed the MOU that we, uh, that Hunter took to them and, uh, it turns out they have, like, three entities. And the entity that owns their property in, uh, um, in Flora is, uh, Single Tree Holding LLC and not Single Tree Transportation Incorporated. So, I got a new, uh, one just for you to sign now because we didn't sign it because the council had not yet voted on the, uh, resolution of interest in making the swap. And they did at their last meeting, so we're...
They did at the last meeting?
Yeah, the council adopted that resolution, so we're, uh, I have contacted one, uh, surveyor. I'm gonna contact another surveyor to get a, get a price to do the surveying. And, uh, Single Tree has already contacted one of the appraisers that I gave them the names of to, to do the, their part of the appraising. And I'm trying to get, uh, an appraiser for the county, for the, the county's part of it. So, um, I need you to sign a new MOU. It's, everything's the same except the name of the company. And I don't know if you got that, Beth, or not.
The MOU?
Yeah. If you would just, uh, make a motion to approve the MOU that you saw last...
Okay.
...meeting, that'll be sufficient and I'll get you copies of, of it. It has a different name on it for the, uh...
Okay.
Single Tree. Just need a motion and a second.
Can you pull that up today yet?
Pardon me?
Can you pull it up today yet?
Uh, yeah, I can, I can get it. I, I sent it by email, but it was, it was Friday late, I think.
Is this, I've got a copy of it, but you said there are changes to it?
Does it say, uh, Single Tree, uh, uh, Holding or does it say Single Tree Transportation at the top? And the bottom? It, it may not be, there's another MOU that you got for the energy company that's gonna do the audit. That may not be...
Uh, this is... This Services and Appraisals, um...
Okay. The name, is it Single Tree Transportation or is it Single Tree? Well, that's something else.
Oh, that's something else.
The MOU that you have is for Carol Manor.
That's...
Oh, okay, the Fairgrounds, yeah, yeah.
I'll have to, I'll have to take a look on, have Beth look on her computer. I didn't bring my computer today, so, but if you make a motion to authorize the, uh, you to sign the MOU with, uh, Single Tree Holding LLC.
Okay, I'll make a motion, uh, that we authorize a MOU with Single, uh, Single Tree Holdings LLC.
Second it? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Now, when will we get a copy? Is it gonna be two weeks before we get a copy to sign?
Well, I'll, we'll try to print while you're still here.
Okay.
Or I can go back in if I can...
Do you want me to go look?
I'll be glad to look if you want me to. Okay. So, while she is gonna check that, while Beth's checking that, the other thing I had was the, the Ordinance 2025-05, Wright Farm. This is for second reading and it, you've already had first reading and we didn't get it on the agenda the last time, so, uh, it's el, it, you should at least do the second reading and have both readings and then you can either table it or you can adopt it today.
We have to have a reading though by title.
Yes, we'll do that, yep. Because it, it received one reading and, when it was introduced and then in order to consider it, you need to do it. It's, uh, and Mike has requested that to be on the, today's agenda. Is Mike here? Yeah, I don't see Mike here at any rate.
Which one?
Mike Martin, that's all right.
Too many mics.
I don't see him out here.
I don't, I don't have anything for you except for stuff on vacation, yeah.
Vacation, okay. Well, I may not have it today, but they've already signed it, uh, and, and I've got that one for...
So, this is necessarily gonna slow us up any if we don't get it?
No, it's not gonna slow us up.
Okay, I mean, I, I always say the government moves at the speed of a glacier and I'm, and...
Well, uh, Cole was right away, he got, got it, got an appraiser, so I've gotta catch up with him on getting our appraiser. I'm gonna try Sheldon Holsinger or his son and then if I don't get Sheldon, I'll get one of the other two that we had appraisals, Paul Midow.
Okay.
He got Greg Vogel, uh, so, we've used Greg Vogel before, so, they gotta be commercial appraisers. So, what they're gonna do, uh, our appraiser and, and, uh, Single Tree's appraiser, they're both gonna appraise, uh, our five acres or whatever amount it is and, and they're gonna appraise Single Tree's property in, in Flora. And then, uh, on, on the purchase side, we can't exceed the average of two appraisals. On the sale side, we just use those appraisals as information and the board can set whatever price it wants to, you know, based on the appraisal. So, we get those appraisals back and the appraisals may take a while. That, uh, I'm gonna go with the first available to get it, to get it appraised. And I think Cole Hittner did the same thing on getting Mr. Vogel, so the sooner we can get the appraisers going. And then, I've contacted one surveyor. Bob Gross gave me the name of two surveyors. One of them is one that we use to, to survey the bollards that were in the road and, and another surveyor, Vester, I think, is the other one. So, he's given me these two suggestions, I'm gonna get quotes from both of those...
Okay.
...to do the survey.
Now, we're surveying which, we're surveying our property?
We, well, I, I, there should be a, an existing survey of, uh, Cole said he thought there was a survey of their property, but he couldn't find it. So, the surveyor may, may very well be able to find it.
Do you, do you know exactly where that five acres that you're planning to trade?
It's never been separated off and staked or anything.
So, we, we need some kind of a, uh, sketch or something to know where that five acres is so we can get that to a prospective survey.
Surveyor, yeah, that's, that's something that...
Because we're gonna have to divide it out.
Right.
Did one of you want to work with Cole Hittner on locating the five because I...
Yeah, maybe we both can.
Okay. So, uh, I've got it, you've probably got his number two, right, or not?
Well, I don't know if I do anymore or not.
I've got it. I, I'll give you the, I'll give you his number so you can call and where, where do they want the five acres at and where are you willing to give them the five acres so that it doesn't cause problems? Sooner we can get that, that'll help the surveyor out.
Yeah. What if, how he sees it and we agree and it turns out to be six?
It said more or less.
So, would that be within a more or less?
Well, I, I mean, you can, you can, you can, you can determine that. If that's too much, then, uh, you know, that's more of a surveyor question. They can, they can...
Well, yeah, I mean, um...
How do you do that?
Do you want exactly five acres? If so, the surveyor can knock out.
That number just came out of the air somewhere, five acres.
You know, if, if you're wanting to go over to that ditch and have a, a line that's movable north, south, or east, west, then that's what you need to decide, you know? And, and I guess, in my way of thinking, you might want to think... And, and I guess in my way of thinking, you might want to think about, uh, but, but it's going to be hard to get an appraisal on five acres if you don't know where it is.
Yeah, we've got to find out where it is.
But it'd be nice if you could get that five acres or six acres to where it's even valued, to where you don't have to spend money one way or the other. You can just even trade.
Well, the other one's got buildings on it.
Well, yeah, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's up to you guys to come up with a tract, five, six, whatever acre.
And natural boundaries, you know, like waterways or roads or fence lines, those types of things would have some dictation as well.
We could, uh, have the appraisals, get the appraisals back first on the, uh, Single Tree property. Then we'd know what we're dealing with before.
Yeah.
We draw the final line.
I think that's a real good idea.
To come as close as we can to even.
And we agreed to move that little creek. The highway part.
Part of this.
So, because otherwise it wound up with a little piece that was of no value. So we moved that creek over to a boundary spot, like right up against the manor property.
So we need you involved with, with helping us, or if it's down.
Okay.
So.
You want to go out with me when we go out there and step out of law?
Yeah, sure. That's no action required other than just to let you know.
Okay.
That's all I've got.
Do you have any advice for us on Ordinance 2025-05?
I've, I've looked at it, it's okay, you know, I don't see.
The ordinance is correctly written.
Yeah, uh-huh. So the motion would be to read Ordinance 2025 dash. Oh, five by Title O. They have to read it by.
For a second rea, for a second reading, yeah.
Ordinance number 2025-05, an ordinance of the Board of Commissioners of Carroll County, Indiana, approving amendments to the 152 dot zero five zero of Carroll County Code, cosplaying the right to farm in an agricultural district. We'll read them too.
Okay, we've read it now. Now what do we do?
You can vote on it. It's eligible to be voted on.
We can vote on what? On putting this?
To adopt the ordinance.
To adopt?
Yeah.
Okay, Scott, what's your opinion on this?
I, I guess I've got a couple of questions and I know Mike isn't here. Merrim, you might be able to answer. With regard to some of the information, like a one acre tract. I know oftentimes when land has been split out, they want to limit it to a one acre tract. Does this have to do with out in the county as well as within city limits? How, how does that all, how does that all work? I'm trying to.
Well, this only applies to the agriculture district. I'm not sure I understand your question about one acre tracts. This, this isn't really addressing any kind of split.
Okay, let me make sure I heard that right. It only, it only has to do with the agricultural district?
Correct.
And what about a split?
Well, that was my question. I, I wasn't sure what, um, Commissioner Ayers was asking.
Gosh, it's section J subsection four. It said there shall not be more than one residence on the tract and the tract is a one acre. It says lot area, one acre.
Okay, so the, the ordinance you have in front of you is actually combined old language and new language. So that you were not presented with just the right to farm language. You were, were presented with the entire agriculture district. Is that correct? That that's what you've got in front of you? Yes, please. Yes, this is the entire agriculture district ordinance. Um, the only thing that has been changed is the, I believe the first part, yes, the first part down to, um, H. So the first part, uh, section one, A, A, B, C, D. The.
It's six.
Who's a member?
Well, if you're looking at the same thing I'm looking at, then the actual agriculture, the ordinance starts on page three with article three.
Agricultural District Schedule of District Regulations. Is that where we are?
Okay, that's not what I'm looking at here. I'm looking at Agriculture District, um, Article Three. Oh, yes, you're right, that is, I'm sorry, I don't have my glasses on, I'm faking it. Yes, that is, so that part, that's the new part. A, you have section one agriculture, section one, A, Agriculture District. The part that's new is little A, B, C, D, onto the next page. E, uh, Right to Farm Declarations. F, G. And then on the next page, when you get to H where it says permitted uses and structures, that is the beginning of the current language. So everything from H, permitted uses and structures, through the end of that document is current ordinance.
So currently on the books, no change whatsoever?
Correct. So the only new part are the first few pages.
And I'm up to G.
A through G are to have changes?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, I, I guess that was my question, you know, what changes to current? Is there, and obviously there's not many. Okay, good.
So what, do you have more question about it?
I don't. Does anyone from the audience have a statement?
Yes, sir.
Seems to be a pretty broad spectrum on what a farmer is, you know? I, I can throw some fish in my pond out there and I'm a farmer now. That's what it says.
Wait, say that again.
I can throw some fish in my pond out there and I'm a farmer, so I can do anything in here and get by with anything because I'm a farmer now. Because I've got fish in there, whether it's for profit or otherwise. Pretty broad spectrum in here of what definition a farmer is and what you can do. And I'm just thinking, you know, being a farmer, you can use about anything now that you can't, couldn't do before. You know, when you say a farmer, is anybody raising fish for profit or? Funds. See much of the things are in there and, and really it's going to, what's going to happen here, I think, is not what this legally says, but what people don't perceive is a farmer's can do anything without paying the price for anything. It says in their yes or no ways, there's things you pay if you do something wrong, but I think the general public goes, like, farmer's got a right to do just about anything they want to do.
Well, there are numerous regulations, IDM, county regulations that cover, you know, a lot of those things. So I, I guess I'll, I'll let.
Well, that's, that's exactly what I was going to say. Anything that you do that involves, especially, and you use fish as an example, and that's actually one area where the Department of Natural Resources has jurisdiction. So any farmers or even people who are doing this for hobbyists still have to comply with state law and federal law. And like you said, local ordinances regarding how they use the land. All, this, this, uh, ordinance protects farmers from their existing uses and from their expansion of existing uses. Um, it, it doesn't protect them from breaking the law.
What brought this about?
This is an initiative, um, you've had Connie Nieniger in front of you a couple of times with Kerpsy. Um, our region, which includes White County, um, and all up north or north to Palasca County, is working on developing and improving agriculture economic development. And part of the initiative from Kerpsy is to encourage all of the participating counties to have ordinances which, uh, support agriculture. And having the Right to Farm Act included in county zoning ordinances helps to support that economic development. And to, our goal is to attract more agriculture production, not just corn and beans and wheat, but attract, um, su, um, support production, um, farm to table production, the, the kinds of industries that can, can benefit from being in Carroll County due to our agriculture base. And so they're asking that, that the counties adopt the right to farm to help protect the existing farmers and then also help protect new agriculture production as well as encourage the agriculture industry.
And how many of, of the counties within the Kerpsy area have already adopted this? Quite a few, right?
Uh, I think there are eight counties. This is a, um, Connie question. She can do this off the top of her head. I believe there are eight counties. I believe three have adopted. We're actually slightly on the leading edge.
We're actually what?
Slightly on the leading edge of this, so we're not the first one to adopt, uh, but we're not the last one to adopt either. Um, I think there, there are four or five more counties that still, are still considering it and running it through their area plan commission. Yes.
Mm-hmm. I think it was unanimous if I don't, if I recall.
You are correct.
Uh, you were here when the lady presented that to us, presented this to us, weren't you here?
I was watching.
Oh, watching, I see. Um, I have a lot of concerns about it. And I'm going to have to go item by item through this with somebody to, to.
Okay.
Because.
I mean, I would be happy.
Every call I have gotten on it is opposed to it.
Okay, that, that is news to me that you receive calls. Do you have anything specific to share on what you've heard?
What?
Do you have anything specific that you can share with me on what you've heard or questions that I can answer?
Uh, the only thing that I have, like, to boil it all down is really concern that my rights, let's say, as a homeowner out here are gone when this goes away. Because this is giving, it's segregating one group and saying you have more rights than the other group does. And.
I guess I would.
You know that I have problems with zoning in the first place. Because I, I believe in the old American system of if I own the property, I ought to be able to use it. And that is not what zoning is all about. And I know I'm way out of date on that according to most people. But to use an example of what I addressed with the lady that was standing right over there was, we have a set of agricultural bins that sit in Cutler. And there are times of the year when it is very difficult for some people in Cutler to breathe because of the dust and, uh, pieces of corn and stuff that are just fogging the whole town. I mean, you can go to your car and write your name on it because of all that's going out all over the town. And when I brought that up, I said it seemed to me like that there should be dust collectors, something like that, put on this. Her answer was, I would hate to have to put anything to be an expense to the farmer. My opinion of that is that's BS. Nobody comes to my business and says, well, gee, I hate for you to have to take this expense. They all say, this is what you're going to do. And I don't understand myself why one segment of our society is going to be exempted from things like that.
So if I could address that, um, part of this is, this does not exempt farmers from following the law. Currently, there is not a law regarding, um, dust, I, I guess, for lack of a better word. So air quality, current, currently there are no state laws regarding air quality with respect to agriculture. Um, part of that is because the nature of the business, there's going to be dust. We had an incredibly dry fall, as you know, you have burn ban in, in place. There's going to be dust. So this does not, this does not give farmers more rights. It allows them to keep the rights they already have. And it does not prevent homeowners from using their homes the way they see fit. It does, it is intended to pre, prevent homeowners from filing nuisance suits for farmers farming the way they've always farmed. Now, if the laws change, if, uh, if the state or federal government come up with ways or additional regulations that farmers have to abide, abide by regarding emissions or, or things like that, farmers still have to abide by those laws. This does not give farmers more rights. It allows them to continue with the rights that they already have without being burdened by nuisance suits from people who don't understand how farming works.
That's, that's quite a statement. I don't understand why farmers work. And you didn't address it to me. You just said for people who don't.
This is usually, um, and, and you're, you're familiar with it as well. We've had these conversations before with people who move into the neighborhood who are expecting that living in a farm is going to be something pastoral with, with grass and cows and, and whatever, and they're, they're not going to hear anything or smell anything. And then the farmer next to them decides to expand their barns. And so they sue him because he is expanding his barns on his property, using his property as he sees fit. He's complying with the law, but the person who moved in the area doesn't agree with how he is using his property. And so those are the kinds of lawsuits that we are looking to prevent. We are not giving farmers additional rights. We're, we're not giving homeowners fewer rights. We're just advising people that farmers do have the right to farm.
Of course, I believe that. Farmers have a right to farm. That's, to me, a given. Um, plumbers have a right to plumb, you know, um. Scott, did you bring up that about only one residence on a parcel? Is that in here?
It was, yeah, I think that was under.
That's an existing, the left existing.
Yeah, that's existing.
That is existing.
To that, um, I'm also following that. The area plan commission is working on, uh, accessory dwelling units. And I'm very interested in that as well, where you can have a parcel of property and you can have a, like a second house or a grandmother house, or what do they call it, mother-in-law house? I'm interested that, in that as well because, um, on our family farm, we have a number of out-of-town relatives that would like to come and spend an extended period of time. And I love them dearly, but don't necessarily want them in my house.
That'd be wonderful.
So that's something that we're looking into for our farm as well. So I'm following that with the, uh, area plan, um, commission and I'm, I'm anxious to see that.
What about if somebody's wanting to establish, um, rental properties?
My expectation is, when I've looked at other, um, counties that have accessory dwelling units, they're not to be used as, uh, Airbnbs or rental use, units. They are only to be used for personal, personal, uh, purposes. Now, that's to say, you gotta, you gotta find out that they're not renting them out.
But so that's not even in the, um, uh, the section, I'm, I'm, my terminology's not very good, I'm sorry, but of, um, one where we, where somebody could come in and apply for it and it has to go before the, uh, review board?
Oh, uh, B, there, you currently have a B and B ordinance, don't you? A, a bed and breakfast ordinance? Turism?
Well, what I'm thinking about is like White Oaks where my wife worked up there for a long time. And they've got, I don't know, fifteen, let's say cabins there around the campground, uh, that are beautiful and highly taxed. And they're not allowed, right? If I have property along the Wildcat and I want to put in something like that for.
Okay, so you're, you're going beyond the scope of this particular ordinance, but to address your question, that would be a different use. So for example, White Oaks, and I'm sorry, I don't know a lot about White Oaks, but my expectation, you said cabins, my expectation is that's a campground.
It's a campground.
So that's what it's for. So you absolutely can lease out those cabins. So you absolutely can lease out those cabins. Or if you have a subdivision, and the subdivision ordinances allow that kind of use, then you can do it. The default is no. However, you can put things in place that allow you to do what you want to do. So like you say, a campground, absolutely can lease out those cabins for whatever, like day, week, month, however you choose to do it.
Can a campground be an agricultural district?
Okay, you're asking me to try to remember things. My guess would be yes, that that would be an allowed use. You would just have to, if it's a special exception, you just have to file the paperwork to have it as an accessory use. But that's a different use than a residential one acre.
Yeah, I like the idea of the granny house out in back or whatever. I think that, I think that'd be good, to be able to allow that.
So stay tuned. I believe that one is coming to you soon.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't see, I mean, one of the questions, I saw windmills and that type of thing, and I think Mike addressed it because we already have ordinances in there that protects us from those types of things. So I don't see anything other than, you know, it's not giving the farmer any more illegal leeway or anything like that. So I...
This is really intended to be an informative ordinance to let people know that if you live in an agriculture district, you should expect agriculture things.
I thought we already did that. I mean, you remember back a few years ago when there were just... Maybe they're not building as many new hog buildings now as they did back a few years ago. But we just, we'd fill this room up with people who are complaining about a new hog barn coming in. And that's basically the answer that they all got was it's in an agriculture area, that's a permitted use in an agricultural area.
Well, this will hopefully prevent some of those meetings by having it already in the ordinance that, and that's really what it says. That right to farm section says that a farmer has a right to farm. And that's the purpose, is to prevent these kinds of conflicts.
Would it change, would this change the setbacks at all? Doesn't change them at all?
Nope.
So setbacks from Radnor aren't going to change?
Correct. And I believe it's mild.
But do you honestly feel that this document will prevent people from complaining? I mean, it's not going to.
I think it's to, well, it's to help reinforce that farmers do have the right to farm. It is also helped to educate people who move into the community. And it is also to help people who are already here to understand that you live in an agriculture district, there are farming things that are happening around it. It's an educational piece to let people know that there is a right for farmers to farm.
Maryam, was it, part of this was to address also with real estate agents? Helping people buy land so they can let them know that, hey, you're purchasing in an agricultural area. Be prepared, there might be, in the falls, planes flying over spreading cover crops.
You really think that real estate agents are going to warn them of everything?
Well...
No.
We're not going to prevent the complaints, but then this, you know, has the kind of stops it, the legality.
Every one of mine know if they got an opportunity to sell a piece of land, they're going to sell it.
Well, one of the things, and that's not an APC, and Amy's on the area plan commission as well as an extension educator. That's not the APC job for that educational piece. But that is one of the things that the Kersey ag strategy is going to do, is reach out to the real estate agents in the community and just inform them that here's the new ordinance, here's what it means, here are things that we would like. And we're also going to be talking to the title companies as well.
Talking to who?
The title companies, the organization's actually, so that they're aware as well of this information.
So people don't come back and say, "Hey, I didn't know this. You know, why didn't you let me know?" kind of thing, you know, so...
Still seems to me like we've got that already covered.
It, well, this is updating it. And you're right, it's not, as I said before, we're not giving farmers any more rights. We are advising the community of their rights. And we're not taking rights away from homeowners. We are advising homeowners of the rights of farmers in an agricultural district.
I am very aware of farming and the problems of it. I mean, I worked for my uncle for a number of years farming. My dad was a farmer. Both my grandparents were Carroll County farmers. My dad had wound up with two grain elevators, one in Bremen and one in Syracuse. And I know both of those were the old-time elevators sitting right downtown, you know? And all the problems that he continuously faced of people bitching about a normal operation of a grain elevator. Dust, smell. What smelled like molasses to me was horrible to those people, you know? And he died when I was 16, so I remember when I was a kid, you know? We have, we have now read this for the second time. But to be honest, I'm going to have to go through this more and more. I've read it three times now, all the way through. And I don't think that's enough for me to do.
Well, certainly I can encourage you to focus on, I can encourage you to focus on A through H, the first three pages.
A through H, all right, I'll do that.
That's the new stuff. You know where my office is, or I think you know my office is.
Sure.
Feel free to stop by. I would be happy to sit down with you and go over that with you and answer individual questions that you might have.
I might very well be doing that, okay?
Okay, so if you're not going to vote it on today, help me with this. They need to officially table it? And can you, do they table it to a specific?
Table it to the next meeting, which would be the November 17th.
Okay.
Certainly.
It'd be December 1st, I think.
Well, don't you have another meeting this month?
No.
Yes.
Yeah, the 17th.
November 17th, right?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Okay.
Will that give you enough time, do you think?
I don't know. I mean, she's going to twist my arm pretty good here, see?
I wouldn't mind having our third commissioner here potentially to look, to look this through and have his opinion. Can we table it till December 1st?
Sure.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we table this until the meeting of December 1st.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Now, if Lauren is unable, I mean, he told me this morning that he didn't know how long it was going to take him to get back.
Right.
So we may have to come to a point of going ahead.
Sure.
And voting on it. But I am definitely going to be talking to Lauren about it and getting his opinions on it. Because I have depended on Lauren for 16 years to give me his opinions and...
He just texted me and he is listening to this, so...
He what?
He is listening today.
Good.
So...
Aye, Lauren.
Got him, you can get him up on the talk chain with, being up to date on what's going on.
Yeah, yeah. Does he have a full copy of this? Has it been mailed to him or anything?
I, I think he should have. I think we were given those.
If not, I can just...
That's the last meeting.
I have other things that I want to give to him, I might just drop them down.
Okay, Maryam, the big, big thing is you're going to have to convince me that this is an improvement over the old one. Whereas I think we already have a right to farm in the county.
It's, this is really an informational piece to impress upon people that farmers have, yeah, farmers have the right to farm. This echoes the state law. It helps people who are doing construction in an agriculture district to understand what their parameters are, whether it's farming or residential. It is, it clarifies what those rights are. It doesn't add the rights, but it does clarify what that looks like. And like I said, I would be more than happy to sit down with you and go over and answer any questions that you might have.
Well, we have from now until the 1st of December, we'll do that, okay?
Okay.
All right.
Motion to table.
Aye.
Need to motion to table.
We did.
We did.
Oh.
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
I've got the revised MOU for you to sign.
Oh, okay.
I was out, I got the appraiser, I got Sheldon Wholesinger to do the appraisal for the county.
Good.
He said, "What about sewer and water to the county home site? Does seagull tree need..."
I'm sure that they would because they have washout.
Is there an issue there? He said...
And he has, he has asked me about that a year or so ago. And I said, "There isn't anything there now. It's just, it's just agricultural now."
So this is the one with the correct name on it, okay? So just need your signature, don't need to make any motions. And if he would take one of these with me to Mr. Hickford and have him sign one and bring that to bed.
He needs to re-sign this?
Yeah, he signed the one that I gave to Hunter. And, but it had, it had the transportation corporation on it instead of the...
LLC.
So, yeah, here's, here's an extra one for you to build.
So take your signed ones out with you and have him sign both of those, give him one of them and bring one back to bed.
Okay, Hunter, I'd like for you to take this to him so that he can see it and sign it. And just explain to him, we're not pulling anything else on him. It's just get the name right.
So we don't want to go too far until we got this utility issue figured out?
Utility issues.
If you don't mind making a motion to engage Sheldon Wholesinger to do the appraisal for the county.
Okay. You want to make that motion?
I'll make a motion that we engage Sheldon, Sheldon Wholesinger to appraise property.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you.
Passed. Now we're down to ownership of fairgrounds. Are you back up again on this, Maryam?
Certainly I am. I brought vision plates.
That's number three.
Just upon our conversation, so it turns out, I can't remember, was that at the council meeting where, okay. So at the council meeting, I said that the town of Flora owned all of the land of the fairgrounds. Amy said that the county owned the county buildings. We're both right and we're both wrong. If you can look up here, this is the current beacon. The two places, this is the 4H building. And we'd already talked about the fact that this bit's not owned by the county, and I'm working to correct that. And then this bit up there, those two parcels are the only parcels in the park that are actually in the county's name. Now, with regard to the rest of the 4H buildings, those were under a lease, a 33-year lease from the town of Flora to the county, which expired in 2006.
And never renewed.
Apparently, nobody noticed.
I remember a discussion about that. I don't remember what the result of the discussion was, but I remember.
Or if it was, no one refiled it.
Yes, nobody, nobody did anything about it. We also have over here is the horse arena, which isn't covered by, by anything.
Well, we've been told, there's people that talk back and forth that say there's a, whether it's a gentleman's handshake lease that is supposed to be coming up next year. And who that lease is between the city and the county or the city and the 4H board, we don't know. So it's more just a...
Could you put the other one up, the survey?
So, Maryam, right now, it's the 4H building and the cattle barn.
Ish.
Ish.
So in 1996, Chuck Ritzler did this engineering drawing. Here's the 4H building, here's the cattle barn. You can kind of see the outline of the county parcel. And then you can see this is the footprint for the lease agreement. The horse arena has a legal description, but nothing was ever done with it. So that's how things existed in 1996. And then this lease expired in 2006. So the, what brings us here is that the 4H folks would like to replace that bathroom. But technically, this one, technically, it is on town property. And so the council was reluctant to fund something without either ownership or some sort of formal agreement between the town and the county.
Now, I missed a word through there. Technically, it is not on county property or is on county property.
It is not.
Is not. Technically, some of the cattle barn is on county property. You'd like to switch back?
Yeah, this part.
So the yellow, the yellow outline is what is owned by the county?
So 5/8ths of, or 7/8ths of the county for the cattle barn.
And that'd be just the north end, technically.
Yeah, yeah. And technically, we're assuming where they're building the new bleachers for the baseball diamonds, you guys own.
I'm sorry.
It's a mess.
How do we get this all cleaned up?
Well, that's why we're here today. What would you like to say? One of the, I mean, there, there is, I'll be, I'm on the agenda for the town council meeting tonight to bring this to them. I've talked with Darryl Yoder, the town council president, and let him know that this is, that this is coming. And his first answer to me was, "Well, I thought the town owned all of that." So I think clearly there are a lot of expectations that, different understandings of what this looks like. So there are a couple of things. The county can ask the town to release the 4H footprint so that the county owns it. The town can offer to lease all of that to the county for use as 4H buildings for, I would...
99 years?
Yeah, I'm okay with 99, at least 50. Or we can do some other combination. I don't want to speak for the town, but I think it's probably a big ask to ask the town to give up ownership of those buildings, which as the park expands, those are not on the edge of the park anymore. You've got the ball diamonds to the north, you've got the soccer fields to the east, and then you've got the tractor pull arena that's to the furthest. So I would think that the town might be reluctant to just give the county that property without some sort of assurances that they're not losing control over it forever. So I guess my question to you is, we're bringing this to you to say, here's where, here we stand today. What would you like to do going forward?
What do you want to do, Scott?
I, I, if, if they own those buildings, then they would...
They don't own the buildings.
You own the buildings.
We own the buildings, they own the ground.
Yes.
Okay.
What, Maryam, where is that document at?
Which?
That the county owns the buildings?
I've got the, oh, that I don't know.
I've been in the F23, I'll never do that again.
I don't know. You're the lawyer in the room.
My expect, my expectation is it's somewhere in the lease. And it does say in the lease that the county is responsible for maintaining all of those buildings, ensuring all of those buildings. So that's part of the lease agreement. And the lease has expired, but I think your attorney will tell you that it kind of continues on the same terms until it doesn't. So, and you've been continuing to abide by your terms of the lease, which is keeping the buildings up, keeping the buildings insured. The town's abiding by their terms of the lease, which is to provide the land. You just, you all just don't know that that's what you're doing.
What would also be... What would also be great is if, whether we do a, a land swap of, because one, I don't think you guys want anything to do with what's going on at the baseball diamonds and the liability that transpires there.
I'm perfectly happy with it the way it's going.
Yeah, but, but I mean, you know. Also, what I think we need to do is we need to protect the, the investment that the 4H and the county has put into the horse and pony arena too. And that unfortunately, right now, is just sitting out there all to the side. So if we could really try to make it a priority to, whether it's a land swap where you legally own somewhat of this footprint that we bring this in, or if it's that ninety-nine, fifty-year lease, however. It would be nice if maybe we somewhat followed the roads around here. Unfortunately, this little T-ball is kind of right in the way. But if we could kind of include this around where the county and the 4H own slash lease this square here that includes the horse and pony arena also. Because there is a lot of money in that horse and pony arena, and it's not so much in the fence and the bleachers and the booth. It's in the footing and the ground that they've got.
I love that, too.
Yeah.
The horse.
Yeah. So it, it would be nice if we could just, all at once, get it all one package deal, whether it's a land swap or a lease. I think it would be great for the program, and I mean, Gretchen can attest to that, too.
It's the one that's in blue.
Yeah, because right now, based on what this shows, even the show are, this building here is the show arena. So it's not even in any of the deal, so.
This building is what?
The show arena, where the, the show arena and most of the hog barn is outside of what even was the original lease and stuff, so.
Where's north on that map?
Up.
It is, okay.
And that was one of the things that, that we, that Amy and I were talking about, that whatever we do, whatever you all do, we probably ought to contemplate the entire occupied footprint, including the building that the Flora Community Club is currently controlling.
Yeah.
Or managing.
So, so like what I'm saying is it might just be best just to kind of follow right along here, go from the edge of the street, go right up through here, kind of follow this road around, catch the edge of the building, catch this little road. We'll have to come, it'd be nice if it could be square, but come up to this road, catch the edge of the horse and pony arena, come back down, and then just take all of this section, including this little grass lot. So that way then that is 4H and I always look at liability-wise, too. You know, when I was here earlier, talked, a couple of months ago, talking about the curbs and the stuff in front of our building of, this is a chaotic mess and, like I said.
What would be your building right now, will you?
It's on the south side.
It's this little section right here, we're attached to the 4H.
Got it.
The community building. So.
But Miriam and I were talking, that has a lease with the Flora Community Club. It would be nice if everything was stated in the same document.
Yes.
The same lease.
The same, yeah.
Well, we're.
Going with the lease, but that one's own.
Yeah, we'd like to.
Years old or thirty-three years.
And we'd have to adjust a little bit because the Flora Community Club is not, is a different, is a nonprofit organization. It's not the town of Flora or the county. But I'm sure the Flora Community Club would be cooperative in, in whatever you all.
Stated in there.
Yes, yes.
It could be part of it.
I'm not asking you to make a decision today, we, I do.
We have a meeting with Flora tonight.
Yes, yes, I'll be talking with Flora tonight, and I'm not, I will not be asking for them to make a decision, but I want them to understand.
Make a decision so we can act.
Okay.
That's where we're at, is bathrooms are really on state.
Excuse me.
I, I would, I, I like that proposal, and Miriam, if, if you would be so kind to make that proposal tonight in kind of the roadway, you know, around on the north side, down to the north side of the horse arena, around the horse arena, pick up that driveway to the soccer field, because that follows right along the south side of the, the 4H community building.
It, it would require a new survey, because the survey that Chuck Ritzler did was just the occupied buildings. He didn't do the whole space.
Right.
So I guess the question is, is if the, if we can get, go to the town, are you guys willing to give up that little bit of land or swap them out, or how does that work of?
Well, we'll work it out, and depending on what the final picture's going to look like, we'll work out the adjustment of the ownership.
Yeah.
I would be of the opinion that, yeah, we could relinquish that little parcel to them.
Okay, I, I will take this to the town tonight and report back next time.
Yeah.
On the seventeenth?
Mm-hmm.
I'm willing to work with Flora, however they want.
And I think this, this would be easy to collaborate on, it's just that none of us knew that this is where we, what our starting point was.
Well, it looks like there's a ball diamond right in there, too.
Yeah, that's a T-ball.
These are like two little T-ball fields, I think.
Like practice, practice style fields.
Yeah, yeah, this one kind of.
So once we define, we'll need to survey around it or, or see what the, the town's plans.
It looks to me like though that no matter what, the restroom should stay for us, right?
No.
No.
It sits, am I correct, Gretchen, it's right here?
Yep.
Yeah. So it would be encompassed in that.
In the lease.
Yeah, yes. So that's the main reason why we kind of want to square this up, because, I mean, the county doesn't want to put a hundred and forty thousand into another building that isn't on their land or on their lease, so.
Just to clarify, I don't want to put a hundred and forty thousand dollars into a restroom.
Well, it's more than just a restroom of.
I know, you got a, you got a addition one to it for storage and, and all that.
They, yeah, they have their own, yeah.
Okay, well, we'll be looking forward to it.
I will, I will keep you posted. I will direct all my legal questions to your attorney as, as things go through, and I'll keep him updated as well.
That'd be fine. Thank you, both of you. What are we down to here, custodian Keith?
Hopefully mine will be quick. So the phase three for the TK elevator, the modernization, they've already completed the phase one, phase two, complete jack install. Phase three includes the new control panel and everything else, rollers and stuff like that. Thing I'm coming with you today is they're stating that it'll take approximately three weeks of the elevator being down. And inside discussions with limited time by the end of the year, starting the week of the, November seventeenth, for being, for the elevator being down for three weeks, looked the most ideal timeframe with the least impact for, to get it done, or to get them in here by the end of the, end of the year.
So we're going to have the elevator down for three weeks again? Oh, Lord.
Well, it's not, I mean, at least it's not two hundred and sixty-three days as it was for the jack. But yeah, they said appro, they'd take approximately three weeks.
Crap, I got over that the last time. I mean, there were letters to the editor that we ought to be prosecuted and on and on and on.
Oh, yes.
So what, what happens if we don't do anything to it?
You don't meet state guidelines.
Okay.
Because once we started, as I stated at the beginning of all this, once you go beyond the power unit, which was phase one, it, to go, to get to full state regulations and guidelines, you had to do these, these three phases. And that's the reason why we broke them up, instead of doing it all at once. That way it'd take less impact for stuff that was going on in the courthouse and everything else like that. If. Yeah, they got like a one day on the tenth of November, but yeah, I've been.
They don't have any long ones?
No, it'd be your standard, just like Thursdays and stuff, yeah. Nothing that sticks out that would be a major impact to anything.
How much are we talking about, Keith?
The what?
How much are we talking about?
We've already, the, the, the funds for this has already been taken care of. It's just, right now, only thing we need is the time for the elevator to be done.
How much funds do we have, are we taking care of?
For the remainder is.
Phase three.
One, yeah, twenty-six thousand, I think.
Twenty-six thousand?
Yeah.
And that's in our elevator fund.
Correct.
Kim cap.
I think Kim cap, correct.
Twenty-seven, zero, six, seven.
Twenty-seven?
Correct.
Which is already in there. Reason he's kind of wanting to do it to the end of the year, I think, and I might miss, but is, council has made a comment that encumbrances, they didn't want to do many encumbrances. He has the contract and he's also got the money, so I mean, that would be easy to encumber for January if he thought January was not as heavy as the last couple of months.
So that's what you're thinking about, January?
Well, the first option would be, you know, December or November seventeenth, but if that's pushing it with the holidays and everything else, looking at if we have to encumber for next year, I think it was, I was looking at January fifth. I think that's be the second week of January. Because three weeks there really doesn't, we don't have any holiday, major holidays or anything else big going on at the beginning of the first of the year. Kind of look at it as the least impact to departments and the courthouse. The public that has to enter the courthouse.
And then we'll be done with this darn thing?
I like the idea of, of holding off, doing the encumbrance and holding off till January. It seems slower and maybe not as many visits, no holidays to worry about and that type of.
I, I kind of agree with that, too. I mean, with the courthouse dinners and stuff like that and different things, I agree.
So when do you want to do it, Scott?
I would hold off until that January fifth or sixth timeframe, get through the holidays and.
All right, so.
Then after that. And we've got the bill and everything, so we, the encumbrance would not be an issue.
Yeah.
Be fine.
Correct, I just picked the month, yeah. Okay, I will relay the information to TK and I'll get what's back on the encumbrance. You don't need, you don't need to make a motion.
What?
Do you want to do a motion on that?
Oh, you can do a motion if you want, Scott.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we give the custodian. Allow him to get in contact with TK on elevator repairs for the first of January, first part of January.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay. And now.
What's that?
We're down to edit requests. Twenty minutes away. Yeah, I need to get my file out.
I need to, good job.
Is there anybody that wants to speak to us on an edit that didn't get approved or that needs to be altered or something? You bet, come right on up.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Yeah.
My name is Madison, and I'm Madison Kaufman, I'm the executive director for the Carroll County Chamber of Commerce. So I know there's been some discussions with you all, but I have a handout that I would like to give you all. And it's just a little bit of the infographic of our ask, a little bit, as well. And then also I have Amy Beechey with me, she manages our Biz Excel program. So wanted to kind of give some handouts if that was all right. And I believe we have.
Thank you.
I gave the auditor's office another packet on Friday, and I believe you have those.
You believe what about Friday?
I gave a, like, packet that had like our letter for our ask and then some support letters. So I am going to go ahead and have Amy talk a little bit about the Biz Excel program.
Yeah, hi. Are you ready? I'll let you review that before I start talking, okay? So as you know, we, we've come here before, you've funded the Biz Excel program, and we're thrilled with that. You can see the results on the results page here that we track for you. That we've created, you know, thirty-four jobs over the last few years in the program. We've loaned three hundred and twenty thousand dollars in low-interest loan funds. And you have some letters of support there from clients that we've worked with. And I'm going to ma, I'm going to make this announcement right now, it's the first time it's been public, but we were just awarded ninety-nine thousand more dollars from the federal government for this program, which is really good, you guys. I mean, having three grants in a row is really amazing. So they see the value in this and they like what we're doing, so I hope you do, too. Truly economic development. You know, eighty-one percent of your businesses in Carroll County have ten employees or less. So that's what we're doing, we're really focusing on the small businesses here.
Did you find your packet? Come here. Did you find your? Did you find your packet?
I think I have all my packages here. Okay, are you continuing this revolving loan program?
Yeah, that's what the new award from the, from the USDA is, to continue the revolving loan program, the edu, the educational component, and then the, the training grant, so that's what we offer to small businesses. And you can see it's working, I mean, with the results that we have.
How many businesses are involved with this?
How many total have we worked with?
Yeah.
Uh, gosh, I, I always try to be ready for all your questions, but I don't, as far as, I, I mean, I would guess up to a hundred. If you look at how many have gone through the class, how many loans we've had. We measure, and the USDA measures success by job creation, and how much you're, how many jobs you're creating with the money that you're given. And we're doing great in that regard, and that's why we've got a third, we were in, end of September, we were just awarded a third USDA grant. So that's a really big deal for Carroll County. We're going to make a big deal out of it, we're going to celebrate.
And all loans, technical assistance, business planning, all that, that is offered to chamber members, right?
No, that's offered to anybody, any business in Carroll County.
I was going to say, actually, I believe a large portion of that actually are not chamber members. And so it's something that, like, it's not limited just to chamber members. And we do try to maybe down the line, but I don't try and push it as much as well.
No, it's just open to any business in Carroll County. The size standard is with less than a million in gross annual sales and fewer than fifty employees, so it's smaller businesses.
How do you find information about these programs? I mean, really, the, the real information, not just a short synopsis?
It would be through the chamber. So we do post about it. I will say, I might have not have done as best of the job as I could have, but I have learned so much since becoming executive director. Amy and I have worked a lot, she's explained a lot of this to me, for me to just get a better, broader. I'm really wanting to learn a lot in my new role. So by getting a better understanding, I feel like I'm able to promote it much more. And so it's something that I am wanting to change better as well. But we do have some brochures, we post about the class.
So, so social media, there's a tab on the chamber website, just, just about Biz Excel.
Word of mouth is one of the biggest promotion as well. So if someone hears about them, then they come and talk to me, and then I will tell them a little bit about the. And then I will tell them a little bit about the program and then get them in touch with Amy and she can go more into depth as well, so.
And we're, we're connected with EDC, I mean, with economic development. We've been making, you know, real connections with them, so they promote it as well. So, we're, I mean, we've got great activity through the program. I'm really happy with it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Scott?
We have some support letters there that show what we're doing.
I don't have any, any questions per se. You know, with, as I stated before, with your connectivity with EDC, I think that that's probably, and I, I don't want to see the chamber go away. I'd like to see it reshaped under the guise of the EDC.
Okay.
And as I had mentioned kind of last meeting when that was brought up, that would be something for our boards to decide. But we really feel strongly that our mission and the EDC mission are completely separate. We work strongly with the small businesses, whereas the EDC is more the large manufacturers bringing large new businesses to Carroll County as well. So, the, feel like they are two separate things, but it would be something that I can, I have brought. I mentioned a little something at my last board meeting, but it's something that we can continue talking about, but it's.
I think the small business is kind of a niche for the chamber. I mean, a lot of EDCs, you know, some of them address that. We know it's a big part of economic development. Like I said, ninety-three percent of your businesses have less than twenty employees. Eighty-one percent have less than nine employees, nine or less. So, to focus on this area is, is a good thing to do for economic development. It's kind of not very niche sometimes, so they're thrilled we're doing it.
And Amy and I had talked a little bit as well. I view this as a partnership. I really would like to get more input from you all, from the council. If you have things you would like to see come to us, I can't guarantee it will happen, but I can at least look into it a little bit more. I want this to be a partnership. We're open to presenting quarterly at meetings if you would like to see what is going on in the community, what type of tourism things we're doing. I am very open to building more of a partnership as well with this program.
And I think that that has been part of the problem and not necessarily on, on you. But in the past, the transparency has just been absolutely gone. There wasn't any, you know, annual record keeping or anything that was reviewed by the council in the past. And I think that that's part of the issue in some of the mindset.
We're happy to open anything. I mean, you can see anything with my program.
Yeah, I, as I have been saying multiple times, I am new. I am aware of how things have gone in the past, but I am very open to new ideas. I feel like our county, in a sense, is kind of at a standstill with tour, like tourism. So, by able to expand the ideas more, create new people, like, new ways to bring people in. I have some new ideas and I'm happy to just talk with people about that and kind of see if that's what aligns with some of the county's ideas of how to bring tourism to our communities. And I know one question that has kind of been brought up as well, since we do ask for administrative fees and everything. There's a lot of behind the scenes that you might not see. I'm, we're managing the grant cycle that we do. And this year alone, we've given twelve grants to nonprofits or local events going on. And that is coming through, like, with edit funds. So, and the way I kind of view it is it kind of goes through us and then we're able to give it to them besides having so many small ask coming to the council and the commissioners for edit. So, by doing that, different events come up. It's been working really well and being able to give those events and nonprofits the visibility that they might not be able to get by themselves. So, that has been a lot of fun. Do a lot of research. I find information to put into magazines. I meet with different tourism things of what's gonna be the best thing for our buck, buck to see. So, there's a lot of planning, implementing, advertising work done by the chamber and our staff alone. And that's kind of why we ask for many administrative fees. Also, the county tourism website, carrollcountyindiana.com, we manage that. If people have questions, I got email requests not too, probably a couple of months ago. Someone was wanting to do something at one of the parks or wanted to camp out and they're like, how old do, I go about, go about that. So, it comes to me and then I need to find out the resources, get them in touch with the Parks Department. So, it's a lot of behind the scenes and pointing people in the right direction. So, we kind of are the one-stop shop as well.
This is a beautiful brochure.
Thank you.
This down here in the corner, the top right picture, what's that a picture of? It's pretty small.
Uh, I was gonna say I have it. The top right, that's Angel Hill. So, the ones on there are Angel Hill, the Opera House, Arvin's Acres Winery, Fontana Farms Brewery, the Madam Carol, Wabash and Erie Canal Center, and then the bottom right is White Oaks. So, that was initiative we done. I would like to do, start doing some more co-op pages. This was one that we paid for as, it was kind of a last minute thing, but we put it in the summer publication of Travel Indiana Magazine. So, it was able to seen by a lot of people and that's something I want to explore more. Maybe edit is used for like the header, but then some businesses could pay into it to, that way it's not just, it's kind of free for all, first come, first served and really try and hit on those and beside, we also do use our funds to promote in some of these magazines our community calendar. So, what kind of, I didn't put it on this one exactly, but for the summer it listed, I think, the fair dates, the Lake Freeman Festival, Abbey and Libby Park had some things going on. So, we really try to reach out to events that are going on and say, hey, would you give me the dates? I'd love to put this in publication. So, the edit funds helps pay for that. So, those nonprofits and those events don't have that additional cost to promote any events coming through edit funds to bring tourism to our county.
Well, something that I see on there that I like very much is the fact that you have Angel Hill, Arvin's Acres, Madam Carol. I'm looking at ones that are private businesses. I'm all about private business. Not that I have any in the county, but I'm all about it.
I think it's building those partnerships a little bit more, like, you have something to offer for our county to bring people in. How can we use that and just kind of see, and that's where it's like, this first one was, we end up paying for all, but maybe futures past would be like, okay, for a hundred dollars, we will put you in this. So, we take a cost, like the overhead cost of doing the, where it says Explore Carroll County, the writing, I could do that part, but then they provide me with some information that they would like to be included. So, it's those moving parts that is taking time. I have to contact all these people. I need to put this all in a document to send then to the publisher. So, there's a lot of behind the scenes that go into these publications.
I have seen the twenty-five Indiana Festival Guide. In fact, I think about read the whole thing. The Explore Carroll County, I haven't seen that one.
Uh, so, that, it's just one insert in the Travel Indiana Magazine that we did for the summer edition.
It looks nice.
Thank you.
Well, Scott, what do you want to do?
Well, I know that, that all of the requests have been advertised. And I think we can, you know, with, with everything being advertised, the council will get to see them with a caveat that I, I still feel that this should be incorporated into the EDC.
Well, I very much respect Scott's judgment on these things and we have not finished, of course, anything up on this. We did announce some that were go. So far, we have five entities that are. I think we're gonna have to do some more talking to figure out where we want to go with this.
Okay. So, I guess that's a kind of question for Beth. Are they all still gonna be advertised that if you guys even push this to the next meeting, that it could still then go in front of the council or do we have to wait a whole nother time? Okay. Well, I wasn't sure if we weren't approved.
Well, we did all of them.
Okay. Okay.
So, please.
Thank you.
Reach out with any questions.
Say that again, please.
Reach out with any questions. We're happy to answer in the meantime.
Oh, I appreciate it.
We'd be happy to meet with you all and just kind of explain more and any questions you have and just kind of see what we can do and see how this partnership could go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike, if I may ask, on the same, same topic, the, the mold remediation was approved by the council?
Yes, the council approved. I was gonna wait till the end and come back and ask that. The council approved the hundred and forty-nine thousand to do the mold remediation on the building. I haven't gone to Todd yet to tell him to start work because I missed the last meeting. I was at conference and I heard that it's been placed on hold.
Okay, but they approved it through which fund?
Rainy day. Or, I'm sorry, edit.
They approved it through edit?
I thought it was rainy day. I'm sorry, it was edit.
It was advertised from Kim Cap and Edit and it was brought up that Edit can be used for anything, so they changed it to Edit.
Okay.
Question.
No, she, she asked, she said it.
Okay. I went through it about two weeks ago through the jail there and looked it all over again. And, I'm sorry, had a gentleman with me who was looking at it for removal of that end of it down there, the cell part. And he has not really gotten back to me. I got the impression going through there that it was, he was seeing it was a bigger job that he, he could.
Well, it's, it is a very large job. Before you tear down that jail part, the main furnace, the main air conditioner, the water main, all that goes into the jail area. It comes into the kitchen. So, you'd have to move all that. If you're gonna do any tearing down of a building, OSHA would not allow that building to be occupied as long as there was being a teardown of any portion of it, because you don't know what's gonna happen when you hit a wall. You could collapse majority of that building. So, you'd be moving dispatch anyway, and if that's where we're at, you, you'd still have to do the mold remediation to do that, to move dispatch out, because that will take over a year to get all that planning and all that worked out.
Yeah, I, it's gotten to the point there, I mean, something has to be done.
Right, we, I mean, like I explained, I think, two or three commissioner meetings ago, we're at the point now that no matter what you guys decide to do five years, three years, long term, we still have to spend this money to do the mold remediation because you do have employees in there.
To tear it down, we gotta do the mold remediation?
Well, if, if you're gonna decide to tear it down, that's gonna take a couple of years to get.
Yeah, it is.
But in the meantime, you have to move the dispatch center out of there. So, if you're going through all the planning, you're gonna have to move the dispatch center out. I mean.
So, Mike, you think we ought to just keep this old building and just keep it forever?
I argued this a long time ago. If we tear it down, we're still gonna have to move, you're gonna have to move dispatch.
We're gonna have to move dispatch.
You're gonna have to move dispatch. If you tear down any part of it, you can't, they cannot be in there while the building's being torn down. Any part of the building's being torn down. But if we're gonna look at moving dispatch, that's still gonna take time to get the bids and everything else. We're at the point that that mold's getting bad enough, and it has been bad enough, that we're gonna have to do the remediation anyway.
Like I, like I stated those number of meetings ago, this is, this is needed and it will hopefully give us some breathing room and some time.
It's a, it's a time buyer.
To consider what we might want to do long-term with nine-one-one, with the building, with everything else. But this, for the employee's sake.
Right.
This has to be done.
Correct.
So, what do you want to do Scott?
Well, it's, I mean, the, the council's already approved the, the move, so, I mean, technically add it into the, the edit request or it's, they taking it out of twenty-twenty-five edit? Is that what they're going to do?
It's just edit. We, you guys had said to advertise it from Kim Cap and Edit.
Right.
So, when they made a motion, they decided to go with Edit.
Okay. So, there, I mean, technically, there's nothing on our part that we need to do? Is that correct? Cause we already, we already approved.
For it to come from one of them, the additional has been advertised.
And the council took it from Edit, so it's.
An assumption on my part would be the twenty-twenty-five edit, so we don't keep prolonging this.
So, we don't, there's nothing more on our part we have to do.
But is it gonna be done by the end of the year?
Well, I gotta call them now. I mean, originally I had it planned to start on the, this week and then when it was put on hold.
I didn't really ask them about the time. I knew.
Okay, I, I presume it would be taken out of twenty-twenty-five.
What do I get? What do we get for a hundred and twenty thousand dollars?
They're adding four more handlers in there. They're remediating all the mold. They're removing the water sources and capping them off. They're plugging the drains that would cause most of the sewer gas backups. You're asking me to remember off the top of my head. Dehumidifiers and remediating the mold, painting it, and then also adding the other windows in there to seal off those windows that are back there in the jail now. And it started out in September is a hundred and thirty-seven thousand, went to a hundred and forty-one in October. So, I'm hoping to keep Todd at that hundred and forty-one.
And aren't they covering those louvers, the bottom part of those windows?
Louvers will be covered as well.
Ted, is there anything we have to do at this point?
Need to authorize either Mike or a member of the board of commissioners to sign a contract with Price.
I have the contract that we need to sign. I might have a copy. Yeah, so we just need to sign the contract that is.
So, you just need a motion to authorize either Mike or one of the commissioners to sign the contract with Price.
I'll make a motion that we authorize Mike to go ahead and sign the contract with what is it, WP Electric?
WP Electric.
WP Electric for mold remediation at the old jail.
And it's for a hundred and twenty-one, is that what?
It's a hundred and forty-one thousand, I've got it right here. Hundred and forty-one thousand, three hundred and ninety-three dollars.
Forty-one?
One forty-one, three ninety-three. And the council approved up to a hundred and forty-nine.
This dead horse just keep costing us. We keep feeding this darn horse. I'll second that. I'll second that. And call for a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
And then while I'm up here, real quick, real simple, I want to rescind the fire ban, so I just need you guys to sign that.
You wanna do what?
Rescind the fire ban, remove it so people can
Burn.
Oh, yeah. I just think everybody assumed we did that. Okay, you wanna make a motion on this, Scott?
Yeah, I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion that we accept the rescinding of the, the current fire ban in place.
Okay. I'll second it. All in favor, say aye.
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 Do we need an executive order number?
Yeah, it gets a new number. It refers to the date of the
The original?
Original, yeah. But it doesn't have the number on it, so that's okay. Just put a new number on it, Beth.
Number four.
Zero four.
Anyone else that wants to address this? Yes, ma'am. Oh, yeah.
I just wanna give you a quick update on that mold project.
Um, we received both bids. We got the second bid last week at the end of the week, so the second bid came in higher than the first one, which they're both higher than the money I was allotted, so what I'd like today is your permission to go ahead with talking with Tri-Tech and working either towards 150,000, which is what I was given, or doing a storage unit for right now, or a storage garage, and then seeing where we can go later from that, but get it back to the 150. So, I just want permission to work with Tri-Tech.
Review for me, if you would, where, where we are on this whole thing.
So, Tri-Tech's, um, the HVAC system's what the problem was, but we don't have to have it, we just have to have proper ventilation. So, Tri-Tech with the HVAC was, I think his HVAC system was 85,000, so it was like a $280,000 bid. And Bennett's came in with $115,000 HVAC and his came in at 299.
Wow.
So, if I can sit down with Tri-Tech, go back to what we originally, like a year ago, my bid was 82,000. So, try to go from that and see if
Okay, what, what, what is being added to the 82,000?
The HVAC, mostly.
Heating and air conditioning, ventilation.
Which we don't have to have. As long as it's got proper ventilation, we don't have to have an HVAC.
Oh, I would think you'd wanna have proper ventilation.
But it's, yeah, but it's not hooked to another building, so, I mean, the HVAC would be important if we were hooked into another building, but we're not. We're gonna be freestanding. So
Well, you're gonna want heat in there though, right?
Yes. We, we, originally, we priced it with a mini split.
Originally, we priced it what?
With a mini split.
Oh, yeah.
Which I still think would be fine. It's climate controlled.
Air conditioning and
And then put an exhaust system.
Is that a good enough exhaust system? That's not, is it?
No, we would put one in, put a fan, an exhaust. Clinton County has just a glorified fan, basically, that they use. So, if I could sit down with Tri-Tech and we can gear back that 280, back down closer to the 150 or closer to that 82 that we did last year.
Okay, if you have
And I spoke
If you have an exhaust fan of any size, you're gonna have to have a makeup air system, aren't you, to put it back in?
I spoke with Jeremy Friday, Jeremy Duff, and he, he and I were on kind of the same page, so I mean, he, he, he was under, I don't know the technicalities of it, I just know
So, what'd Jeremy say?
He was on the same page as me, like going, seeing what we can gear back to get back down the price because I think it got out of hand. Things were starting to get put in it that we didn't have to have, and I kept trying to say that, but so it got way over
But we do have to have a heating, I mean, we're gonna
We have to have climate, yeah. We have to have climate control.
Where's this going in, Scott?
Down at the 405 Cottage Street, um, off
The gravel lot, the back lot.
Yeah.
Back of the lot, right there?
Yep. And it was a, they priced a 24 by 24 sized building.
And this was what we spoke about a year, year and a half ago, and it feels like we've all been mired in the mud since then. Um, I'm, I'm all for working with Tri-Tech to see, you know, what they, what they can get accomplished for us.
What are you in favor of? I missed it.
Allowing her to, to go back with Tri-Tech and see about, um, just sticking 24 by 24 building up. Because I think last year was what, 82?
Eighty, last year's quote was 82. I looked this morning, 82 and some odd dollars, yeah.
I mean, we'll say 85. You jump from 85 to almost 300,000.
And granted, we're a year later, some materials are gonna be a little more, but I still think if you can get it back to a basic, what we need, I'm, we just need a basic garage, basically, with ventilation and climate control.
Yep.
And not a big extravagant. And I still think I can do it for under the 150 that we were given. I, I don't, I don't think it's gone up that much, so, I mean, I think I think we can get, I mean, even that 82 has a little bit of play. It didn't have our cooler and our table and a generator price included, but I, I still think, I still think we can
Okay, the 150 does not include the cooler?
No, no, the 82 did not.
Oh, wow, yeah.
So, I, I mean, I still, that's, I had left leeway for that originally, and I still think we'll be
And that'll be a little, a little ways down the road.
Right.
We just wanna do this first and get it.
But if we could just go ahead and start moving forward, because the longer we wait, the worse the prices are gonna probably get.
Okay, so what would you like for us to do today?
Um, I would like you to grant permission for me to use Tri-Tech to go forward with us getting the, talking with them to get the quote back to a reasonable amount
Yep.
that we're, I had been granted the money.
Yeah, I'll make, I'll make Through ARPA.
Originally was ARPA.
Yeah, I thought it was
But I don't, so I think it moved to Q cap.
ARPA interest, isn't it?
Okay.
Let me check it though, okay?
Okay.
So, I'll make a motion to allow our corner to contact Tri-Tech about putting up a 24 by 24 building, storage building.
Second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
Thank you.
Question?
Yes.
Do you have to have any of this kind of dock or any ramps or anything that's kind of dock height? Do you have any problem with getting?
You said garage door, potentially garage door, so you can back the truck in or come close to that?
Yeah, they were trying to, to look at double doors, but we would prefer a garage door so you can back a little bit and have more privacy if we need to. I don't know that it's gonna make that big of a, and I, I don't remember which one the 82 quoted. I'd have to go back and look, but I, I would prefer a garage door.
Okay, fine with me. Did, uh, where it is sitting, is there possible to put, um, privacy fence?
We've talked about that, possibly. And that's, I don't wanna face the, I wanna face Cottage Street, not the highway, not Main Street so that, I mean, again, it's a little more private. Yeah, there's a couple of houses there, but
Your house is pretty close there, across the street, Cottage Street.
But by the time you open our doors, I mean, it's gonna give, our doors on our truck open out, so you're gonna get a little bit of privacy there. That's probably the, the best. I mean, obviously, we can't face the building, or I would, that'd be the best, but we can't do that and be able to back in, so that's probably the best scenario. That's what we looked at anyways, opening towards Cottage.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anything else? Yes, sir. No, you're
I'm on the agenda.
All right.
Is this for the EDC appointment?
Appointment to EDC.
Yes, they, um, we have two in front of you today. You accepted the resignation of Eric Ross at your last meeting.
Yeah.
And we have, would like to submit a recommendation for Seth Eldridge. You should have both a letter of recommendation from Brett Reinhardt, the president of the EDC, as well as Seth's letter of interest. Um, he could not be here today, he had appointments. But if you'd like to meet him, he is, he's certainly going to be at some of the meetings from time to time.
I know Seth, excellent, excellent young man, accountant for Fisher's. Lives south central Carroll County, I think. I'll make a motion that we accept the nomination of Seth Eldridge for a seat on the EDC.
And this would be to complete Eric Ross's term.
Okay. How much is remaining on Eric's term?
Um, this year and next year, I believe.
Okay.
Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
Thank you. And while I'm here, um
We should have bunched you all up into one
Well, you know, I'll, I'll get with Beth about that another time. Scott Ortman is one of your current appointees to the, um, EDC from this body, and his term is up in December. And he has expressed interest of being reappointed, and I believe you have his letter? Okay.
Scott Ortman wants to go off?
No, continue on, continue on.
I mean, continue.
Yes.
Well, tell me about him. How's he worked out on it?
Uh, he works out very well. He is the, uh, one of the owners of Kokomo Grain. He lives here in Carroll County. Um, he's not able to get to the meetings in person very often, but he does participate by Zoom. We do a lot of our meetings on, uh, with Zoom people coming in. He's got a lot of good ideas. Um, he's good in economic development, he's a good resource as a businessman of a, a fairly large business in Kokomo. So, he has been, um, he has definitely been an asset to the EDC board.
I'm certain.
I have talked to him a few times, none recently, and I was always very impressed with him.
As, as are we. Now, we, we would be pleased to, to have him continue on as a representative.
He also own the railroad through Flora.
Uh, that is correct. He owns the spur. Uh, Kokomo Grain owns the spur, but yes.
They have a lease, yeah. Okay, so you want us to reappoint him?
Yes, please.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we reappoint Scott Ortman to the board for, of EDC.
Second, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, thank you very much. I, I think I'm finally done.
Are you coming up again in another five minutes, you think?
So, are we done with the, did, do you not proceed with the 2026 edits? Are we done with that or are you
Well, we, we finished up
I think we skipped them all.
Finished up with the jail. The only two remain would be the 30,000 for Carroll Manor repairs and the Fairgrounds restroom. Those were the only two that we didn't discuss. Because the jail mold remediation was taken care of via council. Of course, I think Bill wanted some more time.
Okay, so, are we just gonna, what am I supposed to do?
Well, we kinda talked about that. We wanted to know what $30,000 that they requested was gonna go to.
For the Carroll Manor. There was no plan.
Yeah.
Right.
So, that, I don't know that need, we need to put that in front of the council. Without a plan, I don't think that that needs to go in front of the council.
Okay, so, we are
Okay.
Next amendment.
So, we'll scratch that one. And then the only other one was the Fairgrounds restroom. I got it, I received the call from Kevin Giddens, who has been brought into the fray. And instead of having, he suggested, instead of having a general contractor, that he might have interest in somewhat being the general contractor for the purpose of building those restrooms at, and I'm not gonna quote a price, but he said at a substantial savings. And I, I very much like that idea. I think we can probably get by half price, maybe, in that 60 to 70,000 dollar range in putting something up. And I, I've made a promise to contact, um, the town of Flora to see if they might have interest in maybe participating at some level with this.
So, are we gonna like table it till next year and then you can amend your, your edit? If you desire to do that?
Yeah, I, I would be fine with that, doing that.
I just know that I'm opposed to a $140,000 restroom.
I, I agree. That's awfully, awfully expensive.
So, I'm gonna make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we table, um, the Fairgrounds restroom project to obtain a little more information and potentially look at making a, an amendment to the 2026 edit requests.
You're, you're acting like there's something wrong with that motion, what are you doing?
No, I'm not. I just, I I just think we skipped over some things and I was totally lost.
I think we, I think we hit them.
So, just making sure.
Okay.
I was gonna say, I don't, the chamber was neither approved or denied. It said, talk about later. Does it have a motion of some sort to go to the council next? It's just kind of, but it was never
That's a bad situation for you to be in. I get that.
I, I said, since all of these were advertised, that it will go to the council with a caveat that I believe it still should be moved under EDC guidelines.
But there was no motion for that, is what she's saying. And you have to have a motion to send it to the council.
Okay.
And I, can I mention something as well? Um, with the whole, the EDC part, do I need to come up or, what am I trying here? The EDC, so the ask that we're asking for is for tourism. It's not not really how we manage our operations as a nonprofit. So, I feel like having that within our ask is not quite reasonable, um, I guess, with it being more for tourism and not how the chamber is operating, per se.
Well, not all of it is for tourism. 20,000 is for administration.
Because we're paying
Another 35,000 is for, um, training. You've got 15,000 for tourism and marketing grants and 25,000 for county marketing tourism signage. So, your ask of 95,000 is split up in four different categories. So, it's not all for tourism.
Well, the BizXcel part isn't tourism per se, but that's still a different operating than the chambers per se. Like, so I would hate to, I, yes.
I, I was just gonna ask, membership fees, the 90-some thousand dollar grant that you're receiving for the BizXcel program, I presume. The innkeeper's tax, I mean, all of a sudden, we're looking 100 and, I don't know, 160, 170,000 dollars that you're already getting. That's what makes me wonder why you need another 100,000.
So, our membership doesn't go into the tourism part at all. That is completely separate.
What does it pay for?
It pays for my job to get new members to It pays for my job to get new members to give resources. We have different events throughout the year that isn't just tourism. The state of the county towns, uh, state of the schools, um, the senior expo that we just had, we had seventy-three, uh, participants in that. We have twenty vendors there. That isn't tourism. That's something that the chamber is doing to bring resources to the community and to our, um, businesses in Carroll County. So it, they're pretty separate, how I operate. So I'm doing additional work on top of my job to provide other resources, um, in that sense. And so this is the twenty thousand, yes, it's coming. It's kind of, it's paying the chamber to do work for the county. In a sense, we're kind of paying, saving the county a little bit of money. We don't have to do the tourism part, per se. We could not do it, then I don't know who else is going to do it. So we're saving money. You guys could create a visitor bureau. That's a whole nother thing.
Well, like I said, it, I, I'm not meaning for the chamber to be dissipated. I, I want them to be under the guise of the EDC. On their own separate little level, but under the pretenses and the auspices of the EDC. That's it. You can absolutely do your own thing, just under the almost
Operate, I guess.
Almost the two hundred thousand dollars that, that we're giving the EDC currently.
Okay, yeah. Just the biggest thing is if we don't get that twenty thousand dollars or give any administrative fees, unfortunately, we are gonna have to stop all that we've been doing for tourism for the county.
Hey, I have two things about it.
Yeah.
I represent Flora Monroe Township, Democrat Clay and, uh, Burlington Township. The number one thing I hear from my constituents is, seems to me like the biggest thing they ever do is the, is the Bacon Fest. And they're wanting to know, what does Burlington get out of this, you know, and what? So that's a comment. You don't really have to work on that. I'm just telling you.
I get that comment all the time. Um, and so really trying to work, um, I am from Flora. Uh, Caitlin, she is my new, um, employee as well. She's from the Burlington area, Cutler area. So we really are trying to expand our reach as much as possible. So I, I do hear that comment a lot, but yes.
My second point is where does the money for the, um, innkeeper's tax fit into this?
So the biggest part is eventually we would like to have to not ask as much for innkeepers. Um, we're still building that fund up. So I wanna say we're up to forty-two thousand dollars right now. Um, and they're trying to do different things as well. Um, one thing we've talked about is doing, um, a branding, a tourism branding. That way it's not the chamber logo on some of these things. Right now, we don't have a tourism brand. Um, so we had talked about possibly meeting with people. Um, we're creating, creating, uh, trail guides, um, county maps, um, possibly talking about doing a visitor bureau. So, uh, not bureau, visitor guide, per se. Um, but we are, we need to build those funds up. Um, so some things that can't be funded by edit, we have then moved to, um, the CBT. So for example, I believe it's on that infographic, the, um, Visit Carroll County IN Facebook and social media, uh, Instagram pages. We started that with edit funds through the chamber that we got. Unfortunately, when we got cut last year, we had to get rid of that contract. So that was kind of a main hub of tourism, so that way they get mixed in chamber tourism. So we do try and keep those pretty separate. So I have brought that to the CBT and we are doing a contract with, um, Elise Daniels. And she's revamping that social media back, presence backup, cause unfortunately with our cuts last year with our edit funds, we did have to make that change.
You're working with our what?
Um, the Convention Visitor and Tourism Commission. So, um,
How long have you been collecting this money from?
Innkeepers, I believe only like a year and a half.
Year and a half.
I was gonna say, um, we've done pretty well overall, but we still need to build that up a little bit more before spending way too much money for some of these asks, um, for edit. But eventually, we would like to have a steady income where we don't have to ask as much for edit or at all. Um, but at the moment, this is where we're, we're still building up, so we can't quite let that go. And so that is why we are asking.
About how many entities do you have that, uh, pay into the innkeeper's?
Oh, all the Airbnbs in Carroll County, so there's a lot. Um, we are the CBT commission. We are going to start compiling the list and reaching out to some of these Airbnbs and see what they would like to do, what could be helpful for them. So we're wanting to work more with them. Um, White Oaks, Bachelor Run, JW Rinkles.
And we approved the other five.
And I'm learning all this as well. So it's been, it's been a long year.
You're sure. Thank you.
Yeah, but no, thank you for your time and just trying to clarify as much as like why.
I completely understand.
And I, I'm happy to meet one-on-one with each of you as well, to go into more depth, have more details, but, um, so I will probably be reaching out to you, um, all individually to see if that's something that you might be interested in.
Well, Scott brought up that he'd like to have Lauren participate in the, uh, our right to farm argument, discussion, not argument. And, uh, I guess, I don't know where Lauren stands on chamber commerce and all that. I don't know. So, um, I would, I would like to get Lauren's input.
Okay. So, table?
Table. I just wanna go through these edits. I've got five that we approved.
Yeah.
And I had five that we didn't. Um, I just double-checked with Scott, so that we're not holding Carroll Manor anymore. We're not doing that, right?
Not doing what?
Carroll Manor.
Correct, cause they're, yeah.
I'm just updating that roster. We're not doing that one either.
Right.
And the old jail.
That's
That's going.
Taken care of.
Well, it's an okay. It's a sentence.
Yeah, right.
And the, um, four H.
Restroom? I made
Still hold.
Well, I'm, yeah. Well, didn't I make a motion to?
Right, but it's still.
Still quote-unquote on hold.
Yeah.
Or potential.
No matter what, we'd be building a restroom on somebody else's property, right?
Yeah, and I, hopefully tonight.
They'll be working on that.
Yeah, with that lease or whatever the case may be. Right.
Okay, so it's still really kind of on hold, cause you haven't decided one way or the other.
Right.
Okay, so I'm, I'm done.
Okay.
I just had to get that updated.
I lost my agenda in all this stuff here.
I think we're down to other business.
Right.
Oh, oh, Doug. Oh, that's right. And you were early on.
Well, I'll make it real simple. Um, I was just here to, to talk about the employee that we had on leave of absence. In the meantime, I just got a text that he has, or the person's been fully cleared, so.
Wait, he has what?
Been fully cleared to come back to work.
Oh, well, that's good.
Good.
So we don't have to worry about it.
And he's a medic, right? Good, good. Okay. Thanks for the update.
Uh, courthouse grounds applications. Application by Delphi Main Street. Who's running Delphi Main Street now?
Julia Lakey.
Through the city, is that right?
Yes, through, through the city, but I think it's Delphi, or, uh, Julia Lakey is jarred. But I was thinking, I got a new, new form from her, and I was thinking, you guys already approved this.
The lights on the monument? We did. Last meeting, we approved the lights on the monument.
I just think it's already taken care of.
But did, was there a signed approval form? That's what?
No, there is not.
Okay.
I haven't signed one. I have it. I had it here and it just needed signed.
Okay.
But she also has to give her certificate of insurance and her deposit. So I'm gonna.
Okay, one.
You wanna put deposit certificate at the end, just so we know. Okay, and the other thing is, um,
What meeting was that discussed at? Cause it was not the last meeting.
The lights on the monument?
There was a form that came in. I don't think they just said. I think it was.
So it wasn't on the agenda and it wasn't discussed because I?
We discussed it. They discussed it.
We discussed one thing. I was here. Lights on the monument, lights on the monument we discussed at the meeting here. I'm here.
That was the last, that was the last meeting, Jeff.
Need signed approval here is what I have on mine.
Yeah.
And what'd you say?
I didn't sign it, but that's the reason why. But the fact that I did put it on here, cause I got a new one from her, and that was really from he, I think, presented it maybe.
November.
I don't.
I don't either, either. Getting old.
I don't take good notes.
Well, I'm sure Sharon does, so I mean.
I do, I have nothing.
No, Julia wasn't here. She just, this is a, a piece of paper. Okay, the next thing was to be twenty twenty-six holiday schedule. And I put two different kinds in your packet that I always do every year upon your request.
Don't we need? Don't we need a motion? On the courthouse usage for, um, Thursday eleven twenty and Thursday twelve eleven for the holiday vendor market? On the lawn? Okay. I'll make a motion that we approve courthouse usage for Thursday eleven twenty and Thursday twelve eleven for, um, Delphi Main Street for the vendor market.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Got that one signed. Now, we have to decide on the schedule.
Yep, there should be two papers in here.
Now, traditionally, Scott, we have almost always gone with moving Martin Luther King Day from January nineteenth to someplace around the Fourth of July. Which gives us, gives our employees a longer Fourth of July celebration. And it alleviates the problem of what if it snows like the devil on January nineteenth and we gotta call everybody back in to plow the, plow the roads? So I am, unless you have some overwhelming reason against it, or even some less than whelming, I'd rather go with it on, uh, Martin Luther King Day on July second.
I concur. That'll give them the Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday.
Yeah, nice four-day weekend right there.
I agree.
Here's an idea, put it on the Monday if the jail on the evening.
Yeah. Good thinking.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we accept the twenty twenty-six holiday schedule with Martin Luther King Day on Thursday, July second, regular Independence Day, um, holiday on Friday, July third.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Now, do we have anything else? Yes, sir.
Hate to bring it up now, be, and, and it's been a real good meeting for everybody. Anyhow, I'm, got involved with Friends of the Manor out there.
Wait, say it again?
Got involved with Friends of the Manor. They called in about a year and a half ago, so I'm trying to help. The main bottom line is we need to get this facility up, operate where it doesn't count, take so much county money to run. Basically, that's, that's the bottom line. Um, of course, I've been in rental business fifty-one years, not the sharpest tack on the face of the earth by any means. But the problem is you're dealing with the government. The government's neither effective or efficient as well as independent visiting people. They can be more effective, more efficient, even more done than the government ever thought they could even do. My request is, if I talk to Kim and she goes, hey, okay, can I view the building at some point in the year? In other words, can I go out in the afternoon and walk through the building to see what I can see? You know, everybody's bringing these information. We need to do this, they do that, need to this, need to do that. Well, I wouldn't been in rental business for fifty-one years, and I'm thinking I might have some contact, we need to do this first. Hate to see the government, seem like the government does this and they turn around and go back and do something different, cause they wasn't thinking about this, need to be done first. And I thought I might be able to, plenty of money-saving information to that.
You know, it, it seems to me, and, and pretty much along those, those same lines, is that oftentimes I, I call it crisis management. We wait until something happens and then it's, we've gotta fix this right now. Maybe it's the right way of fixing it, maybe it's the wrong way of fixing it. But, you know, having a plan, and that's what we've tried to institute in a lot of departments, having a, a plan moving forward, I think would be very appropriate to try to do.
And then you see, and then the other thing, I deal with it every day. Something just comes to Kim's shoes, make some phone calls. If you call a, a mold remediation guy, what's he gonna do? Come in and say, well, I can fix it for this. Well, sometimes I walk out and take care of the thing myself, and just a few hours, it's not. But the guy's in the business, not gonna take, oh, he don't keep doing anything. It's a government entity, he knows there's money there, he knows there's a chance to get a hundred thousand dollar job, get a fifty thousand dollar job. So he's gotta do his best for his company to do it. And we deal with things every day, and we just take care of it and move on. And I'm trying to get them to think far enough ahead, let's figure out how do we take care of this now, rather than take care of what's going, crisis where it's gonna cost us ten times the money. You know, a water leak never gets better. It's gotta be fixed. And, but everybody's sitting, what we do, what we do, what we do? And I'm hoping maybe I can add a little bit to the thought, thought process, what needs to be done in a year's time, two years' time, five years' time? What's critical today, what's critical that can wait? You know, they haven't done a bad job out there. You're not gonna wash or dry it and everything. It doesn't, they've got some things done. But they've also done some things in the wrong sequence, money-wise. But they didn't know any better. They're not in the business. But we seem like, we've got a pretty good group of people out there now, and they're, and they're willing to listen, and they're willing to use, you know, the meetings are coming out. I think we're getting things done. I'm just hoping that we can mend with the county, and I just wanna make sure that, do you think it'd be okay if I talked to her if I could view the building? I'd like to view the building, see what needs to be done, but, on my own opinion.
I like it.
I don't have any issue with that.
I'd love to have you look it over.
You know, Jeff, I, I've made the comment many times, you know, often and not just government entities, we, we respect an opinion if, only if it comes from sixty miles away.
Yeah.
And my opinion is, around this county, we have so many assets that we could draw on who know things quite possibly better than somebody sixty miles away. And we've been reluctant to utilize those assets and those resources. So, yeah, I, absolutely. I appreciate your, your wishing.
Your point of view there, Scott, is biblical. Christ said, you can't be a prophet in your hometown.
Yeah.
Are you nuts?
Yeah.
Yep.
Yep.
But I just wanted to clear it with you first. I'll ask Kim, but I just wanna clear it, make sure it was okay with the.
Sure. I, I appreciate your, your willingness to do that. Thank you.
Do we need a motion on that, Ted?
You probably should. I mean, I, I mean, I think you need to let Kim decide when he does that.
Sure.
Take her out of her routine.
I'll make a motion that we allow Jeff Watson to contact Kim and schedule some time to go out and look at the manner, um, for any potential mechanical repairs that might be needed.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. We appreciate it, Jeff. Are we done?
Let's take a fork, Dennis.
Yeah.
I entertain a motion to get out the door.
I will make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Okay. Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. You're adjourned.
Ted?
Yes, sir.
Speaking of good, speaking of put a fork in it.
Yeah.
Quaff on brewing.